Check. One, two, three, check.
I'm going to call the meeting into order. Marnie, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
I'm here.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolyn. Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Here.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder.
Here.
We have a call.
I've asked Mr. Horton if he would lead us in the pledge.
Place your hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
All right. I want to thank the vice mayor. She gave us all some chocolate, huh? Oh, shh. Anyways, I'd like to take, and we just have a moment of silence now if we would, just thinking about Israel and Gaza and stuff, could we just have a moment of silence and think about those, the situation that's still going on over there, hostages and all. Thank you. And I'll just say quick so we can get rolling here, but I did have a privilege to meet a young lady that was actually at the music festival where the 1,200 people were, got killed. She actually spoke here about a month ago. So it was, man, it's pretty amazing. And some guy in a white pickup truck picked them up and took them and they never got to meet him or anything, dropped them off. But what an amazing story, the day that that happened at that music festival there in Israel. So anyways, all right. So John, could you please go over the tabs that we have left so everybody, the public and all of us know?
Just as a reminder, the tabs that are held over from Tuesday are tabs 11, 12, 16, and then 22 through 30. And there's also, there will also at the beginning be a general public comment again for tonight.
All right. So before we start with D, how about, so we can do a general public comment now, correct?
Yes, I suggest now and then we can roll into the individual tabs.
Okay. So anybody that would like to speak, general public comment is now open.
I have Van and Don Horton signed up.
Okay.
Good afternoon, council. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Van Cadenhead. And I was at the county commission meeting yesterday where they discussed one of the topics of our discussion tonight about hurricane evacuation. And I would hope that we would have some official response to what they talked about yesterday, if you had followed it. The point was made, I thought, quite well by the people from Key Largo, Dottie Moses and her second up there at the Key Largo Homeowners Association, that we've had supervision here from the Department of Community Affairs, from the Department of Economic Opportunity, and now we have supervision from the Florida Commerce, which is essentially the same department with three different names. And I think it's pretty obvious from the way that they've held a hands-off on our status as a area of critical concern, that we need other leadership that's more environmentally focused than the Florida Commerce, because they have essentially taken hands-off on trying to help us save what's left of the Keys. And she suggested the Department of Environmental Protection, and if that was a good suggestion, I kind of liked it because it had environment in it. And we're losing that environment to a regime that, as the mayor of Monroe County said, "The development world wants to develop." Well, I think the development world in the Keys has had its way for the last 30 years or so. I think development world has way overstepped its boundaries as far as logical common sense, as far as population, as far as traffic, as far as resources. And we're now beginning to see the crunch of all that inattention that has been given. And I think the development world should change their focus to the redevelopment world, because there's still a lot of work for carpenters and contractors and people that build, because, you know, I've made my paycheck among those people for years in my youth. And I understand that they want to have projects, they want to have paychecks for their families, they want to have business. But the old days of development in the Keys are over, or they should be. But as they keep applying for Rogo lots in Tallahassee, and they keep giving us things like the 300 affordable housing permits from the state, the only thing we can really use those for, and I would not give 86 of them to the Semex project, which was bumped down the line yesterday for another three months. But I would hope that we could, we could use those permits as a bank to assuage our takings suits that are on the horizon, and that we could use those as something to offer a property owner in lieu of a taking suit. Thank you.
Thank you, Van. Don?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Don Horton, Scunner Bay Road, Alamo Rata. First off, council, I'd like to start off by saying thank you to Maria for once again jumping in as the fill-in person. You ought to be given sainthood for taking the responsibility for the nth time, for sure. I guess sometimes it helps to be the old guy in a room with a memory, or at least I still think I have a memory. I'd like to remind you all that I was employed by the village when the ball field was being contemplated, negotiated, and constructed. As I recall, Charles Baldwin and Greg Tyndall worked with Ken East, who was the construction manager for the school board, on an agreement. And I recall the agreement being a 20-year agreement with two 10-year renewals that were automatic. And I'm not sure what agreement Captain Ed was referring to the other day when he said we have an expired agreement, but if my memory serves me correctly, there was a 20-year agreement, two 10-year automatic extensions, and I'm sure we haven't been incorporated for 40 years. Which brings me to my next point. I hope that the day will come when this and any other council will completely trust the village staff and listen to them instead of a group of malcontents. Case in point is that this select group of folks convinced you that something stinky was going on related to the wastewater repairs. The contractor's name was batted around as if he had even done something wrong. Subliminal messages that perhaps staff had done something wrong, enough innuendo and insinuations that you all agreed to spend $80,000 to look into these aspersions. To what extent? Well, I got to tell you that I think we just bought an $80,000 nothing burger. Come to find out, staff took direction from the then-village manager Seth. The work that was needed to be done, the approvals were granted through the normal contract process and through the bank, and the work adhered to by the contractor. And as the current council, you inherited this perceived problem. This group of malcontents convinced you to spend $80,000 on an audit, only to find out there was nothing wrong. It's the same group that will chide each and every one of you if you ask for a fair day's pay for the hard work that you all do to govern this town. So let's stop listening to them, please. Now going back to misinformation, trees that are planted as mitigation are not sacrosanct. Also, a group of trees planted in a row don't constitute a hammock, even if they're hammock trees. Don't get me wrong, I want to save trees too whenever we can, but please don't let someone who speaks with authority be the authority. Start fact-checking. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Don.
I also have Joe Wishmeyer on Zoom who would like to speak. Okay, Mr. Wishmeyer, go ahead.
Yes, Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. Tonight, I know that you're going to get ready to discuss some of the council procedures that we have been going over for some time now. I guess my question is, I remember the days when the village first started, and there used to be a roomful of people because it was a gathering and people used to go to get information. Now, all of a sudden, this council, after 20-something years that the village has been in existence, feels it is up to you to start changing a lot of the procedures that have been in place since the village started. For example, cutting a quasi-judicial hearing and only giving an individual three minutes to speak on items that are going to affect them for the rest of their lives just seems to me to be a little bit unfair. If you're going to take the time, you ought to give the public the time as well to speak their piece. As far as the hurricane evacuation goes, people keep forgetting the fact that if we add more and more permits, not just in Alamo Rata, but throughout the county, we have sewer, water, schools throughout the entire county that are going to be affected by all these additional permits and additional building. We know that we're taking very small buildings now and turning them into big mansions, which is causing more and more usage to begin with. So I wish you would please consider this when you're discussing your hurricane evacuation along with the county. The last thing is about our new meeting format. I thought it was supposed to be so we could have shorter meetings and get more items to discuss. Last night, we didn't even get to the consent agenda until after 10 o'clock. We need to stop canceling other meetings and just adding on to the meeting that is supposed to be, that we can take care of important issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Marnie, anybody else? Okay.
I would like to make a comment.
Okay.
I understand that the item pertaining to the insurance of the council is going to be postponed, or I would have brought this up then. But my question is to the council is when that meeting gets underway, and that meeting is very important to me, would I be expected to recuse myself considering the topics?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I will confirm, because you're, as I understand, you're asking about the ordinance that I was asked to prepare for reimbursement of fees spent for civil criminal ethics and administrative matters. Since you have a pending one, I assume that's the question we relate to that. I don't know off the top of my head. I will have that answer absolutely well in advance of that vote, so that if you do, you will be able to file your form and properly recuse yourself.
If I have any of those items, including the ethics, you can't give me an answer tonight. Now, I'm not going to push you for it.
Yeah, but I'm certainly not going to walk you into a vote that you are not, you're not supposed to vote on. I will, I will absolutely advise you. And if anybody else is in a similar situation, then that would also apply to them as well. So I will get, I will get that answered, and I will let you know well in advance of the meeting.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'll say thank you. I just had to ask the question.
So I would like to speak on what Mr. Wishmeyer just said. Sorry about that. I'd like to speak on what Mr. Wishmeyer just said, because I understand that we are changing some procedures with council, council procedures, but up to this date, before today, we, when we have quasi-judicial, we've let everybody talk. People have talked for 10 minutes, 15 minutes. But Mr. Quick is going to now say a couple things where we can wait until we get to that, right, John?
Yeah, I mean, that change is already in there. That's, the change that's before you all tonight was a result of a direction that was given at the last council meeting to, for changes made to, or additions made to the agenda by council. It was currently, it had been at 24 hours. It was to push it back to 48 hours or two business days. And so that's what's before you all. In the past, there was, it was not clear whether there was a limit in terms of public testimony at quasi-judicial. The village had always, as a result of that, the village had allowed for unlimited public comment. The rules that have been passed now have the same limits that apply from quasi-judicial as applied to any other specific item. I also do want to make sure that the public is aware that in quasi-judicial items, it's, it's different than just general public comment. For, I mean, the public can, can say and speak whatever they would like, obviously, but in order for a public comment during quasi-judicial to support a decision of the council, it has to be what's called competent substantial evidence. So it can't just be something like, "I don't like this," or "I think this is going to happen." If they, there's something, it requires something more. So, you know, getting to the, getting, the three minutes allows for the public to provide and get to the point for, to support competent substantial evidence. Certainly, if there are, if any of them are testifying, like is called to testify, that would be different. I don't think that the, the minutes would, the time limit would apply to that if they're testifying, being, being examined by, if like, if you recall the last one we had, I think there was an expert that was here, and Mr. Jaegel, I think it was, or no, Mr. Lapino, one of them from Herschoff-Lapino questioned the expert. You know, that is a specific question and answer that you're called for as a, as a witness or to testify. So it's still available, it's still, it's still there. And, you know, I would encourage the public to speak, but I do want to make sure that they understand that when they speak in quasi-judicial, if, if in order to support the council decision, there is something more under the law is required than just simply, "I don't like this." It needs to be supported by, by facts.
Okay. All right. Thank you, John. All right. Counsel, is there anybody, anybody have any question on that with him, while we're talking about it? Okay. All right. Chief, did you want to say something before we get moving here?
Sorry, back into public comment. I'll fill out a form if I have to. Just like to say to everybody out there and community at large, last Monday, we had a pickup of our Toys for Tots. If anybody has any unwrapped toys that they would like to donate for Toys for Tots, find one of the fire stations, admin building, whichever. Tuesday, we took out seven of those giant boxes and filled up a storage container, or a storage trailer with that and took it away. We've got more boxes available. We've got toys at all the stations. If you've got something, please bring them. We'll be collecting through Monday. And then I'd be amiss to not mention Sunday, Santa Claus, Mrs. Claus and a bunch of elves are coming. And on the back of that sleigh, we're also bringing a couple of Marines, which God love them. They spearhead the Toys for Tots, which is an amazing, amazing thing that they do for our community. And we'll be collecting toys along the parade route as well. So hopefully, we'll see you guys out. Look for a cane to cane, and we'll see you guys there. Have a great night.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, can I just mention one thing? I don't want it to be confused. When I talked about the competent substantial evidence, that is not something that the village created and put in its procedures. I don't want to, I want to make sure there's no confusion on that. That's under Florida law. That's something that's required, that's always been required. I just mentioned it because I wanted to make sure, you know, it's always good to have a refresher, so people know when they come up if, if they want their testimony to, to support a decision. That way, they know what, what is required. So I wanted to, you know, I really just wanted to make sure. But I also didn't want there to be any confusion, like this was not something that we created. It's, it's Florida law. We have to comply with it.
And thank you, John. I just, I wanted the public to understand that coming from you. So, all right, thank you. Okay, so we are going to move on to, the first tab will be tab 11. It's discussion regarding manager contract and negotiations. John?
Yep. If you all recall, at the, the November meeting, there was discussion and direction given to us by the council to prepare a initial contract draft for the council to consider. And ultimately, ultimately, the council will need to approve a contract. This would, this is really just a first step in the process to bring back to you all, based upon our drafting, as well as input from, from some of the council. And just wanted to bring it forward to you all so that you all have it, you can discuss it. If you'd like to give us more direction tonight, we can take it. Obviously, a final decision does not need to be made tonight. This is just a discussion item anyway. But ultimately, the contract would be presented to whomever you, you choose as the manager. I do want to make sure the council's aware. I anticipate there will be negotiation in that. I mean, if you're hiring a professional manager, I would anticipate that he or she would have some comments. And obviously, all of that would need to be approved by council as well. But this is just the first step in the process to get the ball rolling, since we have this meeting and we have one more meeting in January before you all conduct those interviews. And the meeting in January is very close to those interviews, so we didn't want to wait for, for then to, to bring this forward, so that, again, just to get some guidance from you all. Happy to take guidance from, from you all tonight, particularly if there's a consensus on any items. But this is, obviously, is a working document, and we can take input as we go along and ultimately bring it back to you all in, in January as well for, for further consideration.
All right. Counsel, any questions? Would somebody like to start conversation? Or any questions for John, or?
I just have some comments, no questions.
Okay. Go ahead.
Having been the veteran of at least five of these agreements over my term, I just see a couple of things in here that I anticipate would be difficult or objectionable by a potential manager. The first one would be the requirement that managers spend a minimum of 40 hours a week in, in village hall in person. My experience has been that a manager is an executive, and his duties include being at other places in fulfillment of that duty, other meetings, public meetings, constituent meetings, all kinds of meetings, travel and so forth. I expect that we may receive some opposition to that. So that's a comment. Second one is more personal on my part, which has to do with the manager evaluation. And I certainly think that there's a need for that. In my business experience, I have a different style. In my business experience, I have a different style. My dad taught me that, and it served him well, you criticize in private and you praise in public. And I don't feel comfortable in, in having a written document that requires me to give my personal feelings about this with a manager with whom I have a personal business type or personal professional relationship. So, I would like to have the option to not provide a public document. I'd rather have that done in private, which is just my personal preference. If others want to do it in writing, I'm fine with that, too. But I don't want to be required to do it. Beyond that, as John said, it's negotiable, and we'll see what happens. I would be interested to know, John, if we have access to see what sort of a contract form the county and/or Marathon, or even Key West might have, just out of curiosity. What do they do? Might be helpful.
Yeah, I can, I can pull those. Those are all public records, so I'm, I'm happy to pull those and can circulate that amongst council.
Thank you. I'm finished. Thank you.
Go ahead, Henry.
Some time ago, before, when this item came up, I emphasized before we hired the first person for 60 days by way of the county that I sat down and negotiated a contract with him, which did not require any housing allowance. There was a couple of other things, in case he had to stay overnight. I felt we could pick up that for one night. We left. That was our agreement. He asked me, could he take a day to think about it? I said, certainly. That, that day produced something to the contrary of what we discussed. But the most important thing was, when I did the contract for Mr. Yates and the housing allowance, that was separate from his employment contract. And I tried to explain that to you once before, and it fell by the wayside. What he, what he wanted in way of contract and his fee was entirely different than what I gave him. And what he wanted in, for the housing was entirely different than what I gave him. And we okayed it, because it was the right thing to do. But I just want to remind you that these are two separate items, depending on the applicant, as to what his needs are in way of payment and housing. They are connected by one means and one means only, that he has to pay taxes on both of those. So, he can put them together as far as his personal tax obligation to the federal government. But there's no need that we have to put them together as far as the employment contract. And so, think through it. I gave the man $48,000 for, for his housing. I took away $20,000 for his retirement fund. I think I'm the first one to do that. That's, that's been sitting in there forever. So, every applicant is different. That's all, all I'm talking about. Just to be aware of it, that's all. I'm not giving you any direction, but just be, be aware of it when I wrote that contract. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Henry. Yeah, I, I think, I, I understand what you're saying, because the, the two, the $48,000 a year did not have, there was no FRS on that, which, that's a state mandated, right, Maria? What is it, like, 31%, 31.57, or closer to 32 now? Over 32? That's what I thought. I thought it went up, yeah, so.
And quite frankly, it, it upset me a little bit when we brought these people in from the county that if, if we were going to conclusion, that they will get those benefits as well. And I assume the, the lady that's going to, following Maria in that position, I'm sure she's assuming that, that's, she's going to get that.
Yeah, well, she, she wanted to get a place up here.
Well, I understand what, the circumstances. I'm, I'm not debating the circumstances, but the thing is, these people that are coming in in part-time and 60, 60-day periods are automatically assuming that they're going to get that benefit. And that, that disturbed me at the beginning, but here we are. We're going to do it again, probably. And that's just my observation. I have to tell you. That's all.
All right. Elizabeth, you?
You know, I had the, the couple of points that you made on my list as well, Mark, and I just wonder if there's a way that we could request some language that would, that would just manage our expectations, pardon me, and, and, and the, whoever comes in as the manager, so that, it, so we all know coming in that, that, that we, that the way we'll do this is some private and some public, so, so that it's clear, so that we don't, or the next group doesn't argue about that, because that was a, kind of an unfortunate argument that we had, which I apologize for.
You're talking about the review?
The review, yeah. Would that suit you? Just so there's a, some language about, about the options, the range, so that, so that we are all, we can do whatever we want, but it's in, it's, that they come in knowing that, that that's how it'll be done. Does that work for you all? I know it's a little bit of a minutia, but, but I, I think it would help manage everyone's expectations.
Right.
I think every council person has a different style with something like that, because even though we are elected and, and, and the manager is a constitutional officer, we work closely together with them, and we wound, we wind up having a pretty personal relationship with them as well. That's why I feel more comfortable having private conversation where I can be very direct about things. And it's just my style, that's all. And if you guys want to do a different style, I'm super okay with that.
I mean, I respect the, I respect that. And I think there's a way for there to be a, a sentence in there that describes the evaluation process can either be done privately or can be done through a, through a form, through a written, a written page, and, and we, and we, the council has the authority to make that choice. Does that work for you, John?
Yep, I'm drafting some language just while I've got it fresh in my head, and obviously, I'll.
The thing is, John, in, in my experience, I just, I'm not going to do something that's going to be a major mark on somebody's, like Mark said about, you know, discussing things in private, but I'm not going to do something that is, you know, I would tell them how I feel, and I don't agree with what they did, but I'm not going to do something that's going to taint them the rest of their career.
It would allow you to handle it that way, and it would allow me to, you know, I, I personally like it another way, and, and all, with all due respect, but I think if we add that language, then this group and the next group won't have, I mean, it's, it's in here.
We have, that, that way, we each have options.
Right.
Because we all see through a different eye lens.
Yeah. If you're, no, does that, does that sound fair?
Fine. You all right with that, Henry?
My other.
One follow-up.
The way I do things is completely different, but I won't go into that.
Okay.
Can I have one, ask one follow-up on that? In terms of the, for those that elect to use a written form, does the council want it laid out the way it is laid out in here, where it specifies what the, the assessment will include, or would you rather it just be broader and just, and just say that, that basically laying out the two options that it may be done through a written form to be, you know, created by the Human Resources Department?
I have a comment on that. I, if I were an employee, because that's what we are doing, I would like to see what it is I'm going to be evaluated on. I think it's fair to, to put that in front of someone, no matter how we all choose to respond to, to the, the rubric. I think it helps the person know whether they're hitting the mark or missing the mark. That's just my opinion, so I would like to see some, some format that, that they can look at. So, there's, you know, we all say, well, did I, you know, I don't know, did I have lunch at noon every day? Yes, I did. I can, whatever it is.
Elizabeth, I clearly see what you're saying. You want some structure in there of what to, so people know what to expect. And to make that for future council people that will come behind us, won't, there, that this will alleviate a lot of that. And they might change it. They have that option, too.
If it's, if it's neither here nor there, I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, okay.
I'm good.
Additionally, you know, in this experience we just had, it was unclear who was in charge of triggering that evaluation. And I, I wonder, is it necessary to put some language in there so that someone says, you know, now it's time to evaluate? Here, it's, it's, you know, it's part of our schedule. I don't, I, I realize that we are the employers of this individual, but we certainly, you know, for the, for a new group coming in, no one has any, I mean, I didn't know that that was.
We had it before, that it was, an evaluation was required on, yeah.
It is required, but I know that, I just wonder, is that, like, it, somehow, I sort of was, seemed a little last minute, like, does the HR person say, hey, you know, it's, here it is in my calendar. It has to go on the agenda. We're going to do the evaluation. It seemed like it was, oh, by the way, which is unfair to the person who's an employer, or, well, to the employee, and it puts us in a box if something, you know, if we do want to, you know, make changes with that person.
So, John, you have?
It's just administrative.
Yeah, I just wanted to say. If you look at Section 5.2, which is on page three of the draft, it does say that the HR department will be responsible for apprising the village attorney and/or the council at least 60 days before the anniversary date.
All right, there you go.
For the performance, and are you, you guys, are you all good with that timeframe?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't.
Okay, Henry, go ahead.
I just wanted to disclose that the evaluation was not in its time, and that was my fault.
It was what?
It was my fault.
What was, what was your fault? Let's get, I didn't hear you.
Not to have the evaluation in six months. It went over six months. And that's because of me. I didn't call it correctly at six months.
But it's not real, I mean, how, what if, why, why would it be your job to do that?
Well, I wrote the contract, so nobody else was a part to it.
Okay, well, I guess I'm.
I should have called it at six months. I failed to do so. I think I called it like two months later or something.
But that's still not your place to do it.
But I should have done it.
We all should have done it.
That was, that whole situation was a big cluster, let's all just be honest. Because we had some people on the council who didn't want to do a written evaluation. We had the ones of us who did, and it, we didn't have a system that we all agreed to before. In fact, I didn't even know you were supposed to get an evaluation at six months. We didn't. It was a surprise, so it was, the whole thing was a mess. And if we can avoid that in the future, that's, I think, what Elizabeth wants to do, and I think we're all on the same page, so.
Okay, so I haven't, can I ask another question about how this is? When, when are we having the conversation about the process of negotiating this next contract? Is that at the next meeting? Is that right now?
I think we can do it now.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, I'll say what I think if you want.
Yeah, 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 please. I'm curious.
Henry, Henry got us through the last two, right, Henry? And my understanding from the process is Henry gets the, the bulk of it done. And it, and we can choose someone else if you want. I, I'm fine with Henry. But I, I think it's necessary to have some key staff members involved and make kind of a team concept, where, for example, I would appreciate it if Maria would be interested in that, and John, so that they could help guide the conversation along. So, for example, he mentioned earlier with regard to the reimbursement for housing, that he cut that out so that there wouldn't be a contribution on that sum towards the retirement. And there's some key things like that, that I think that, I don't know if what Henry is aware of, although he has tons more, you know, business management experience than me, but maybe not as much with regard to a, a government contract. So, I just feel that if Henry worked with, say, for example, Maria and John as a team to negotiate in the same room at the same time with the manager, we might have a.
Help me, Smith.
Allison Smith.
Okay, Allison.
That's what I was going to say. Allison is the personnel.
I worked with her as the legality of my decisions, so that's, that's the way.
And we all saw, we all, it was sent to us to have any questions, to all of five of us.
Right.
Right, if we had anything, Allison called each one of us and went over it in detail with us, so.
And then you, it came?
Then it came before us all.
You could have made changes.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, I did the basic writing of, of the contract. You approved me. I was very happy you approved me, and that's all. And I worked with Mrs. Smith as far as the legality of the language.
I'm just happy if the three of them coordinate.
I like that. I think that's a great, I, I would feel comfortable with that. If it was a team, then I would love it if, I would participate in that.
Good look on her face.
I have, I have one more comment related to that, and this might be upsetting to some, and I acknowledge that upfront, but I don't know how others feel, but the, having done this the last two times, I, I am uncomfortable when we, when we have the candidates come down and we show them around one day, and then the next day, we have our meet, greet, and personal interviews and so forth. Then later in that same day, we select the manager. I, I don't want to do that again. I would like to have an opportunity to sleep on that. When I say sleep on it, I mean, a day, a week. I don't know how long, but I, I just, and I know the candidates, if they're watching, they're going to go, oh, my God, this guy's an idiot. But I, I'm, I'm an experienced idiot, because when we did it the last two times, I feel like we could have made a wiser decision had we had an opportunity to take a break from that, consult with whoever we want to consult with, constituents, family members, crystal ball, whatever you want to look at or talk to, to have a more, a better feel for that. And so, I personally would like to certainly go through with, if you want to do the interviews, like we said, mid-January, whatever the dates are, 16, 17, 15. But I, I don't want to make a call, I don't want to make a final decision on that date.
I don't, that, that was very quick. Go ahead, Henry.
Yeah, going along with what Mark just said, which I endorse, I feel that it'd be more appropriate, after they give their individual speeches and admit to public, that they be excused. That they're not part of the remaining things on the agenda, or our decision, or our thing, send them home. I just don't think it's appropriate for them to be here witnessing what we're going to do next. I just think it's the right thing to do. And then, when we get to make a decision, we'll call Mr. X, say congratulations, and thank the rest of them with a phone call, and hope he re-apply in 25 years.
Um, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
I, I think that's reasonable. Is there, would it, but I also like the idea of agreeing, having an, an agreement that we would come to some conclusion on a certain date. So, we're, I don't even know what the dates of, it's January.
I feel they should be out of town.
Eighteenth.
Seventeenth and eighteenth, and, and those dates are a, let me look at my calendar. Those dates are.
Really, I mean, before in the past, the two, Greg Orvick and Ted, what we did is we interviewed them that morning, then we had lunch, and then we came here and met here, and then we picked them that afternoon. And it really didn't give us time to digest what we talked to them about, or.
So, could we, could, so if that 17th and 18th is a Wednesday and Thursday, don't we have something on the 19th for that? No, just Wednesday, Thursday. Then maybe on the 22nd, we reconvene with a solution. That's a Monday? So, we have the weekend. We can talk to people. I mean, it's, I would say after a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, it's not going to get any, like.
Well, do we have to have a special call for that?
Yeah, you would. And, and remember.
When is the next council meeting after?
Would be.
We have one in nine, on the ninth, right?
Yeah, it's before. That's, your next one wouldn't be till February 13th. And if you remember, some of you are flying up to Tallahassee for Keys Day on the 24th, so that would take out the latter half of the second week, or the week after, I mean.
So, can I ask just real quick, when you, when that decision is made, is it a roundtable? This guy, you know, I don't, what, is it just a, do, do you anticipate a?
Discussion?
Discussion about?
Yeah, I think so. It would have to be a public.
I feel like he's lying. I think this guy's got that hair.
You don't have to say, you can say whatever you want, I'm supposed, but ultimately, we'll have to vote.
And it's all open to the public. It's an open meeting.
Absolutely. Public comment, not only allowed, but encouraged.
So, could we agree on doing it that Monday, and then we're done? No matter what that looks like. That would be Monday, the January 22nd? So, we have Friday and the weekend?
Sorry, what day is Keys Day again?
That's on the.
The 25th, so I assume most of you are.
I mean, what day of the week is that?
Well, that's a Thursday, sorry.
The 22nd is that Monday.
Yeah, but Marnie's got, he's got the 23rd. Like, I always go up on a Sunday, so I'm there Monday morning.
I was going to drive up probably the Friday after that last meeting, because I don't like flying, and I, it's going to, I'll be gone on that Monday, and.
So, let's see. Elizabeth, what day are you saying, please?
So, so we're having this interview on?
The 17th to 18th.
That's Wednesday, Thursday. Then we have, I'm, I'm just suggesting Monday. So, we have Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. have Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. Or, or do it Friday night?
Hmm.
That, that, that might be too much. Friday night might be too much.
I, I don't know what to say, because I, you know, I haven't done it that way before. I just thought we had a week or so that would give us a good breather. I don't know. Maybe that's too long. Tick off the applicants by stretching it out further. I, I feel for them, I appreciate that. They want an answer.
Um, yeah. Anybody, Henry, you got anything? You got any opinions?
No, what are you, whatever you decide.
What if we did a spec, if we don't do it on the twenty-second, 'cause that's pushing us for, for, because truthfully, it's gonna be the, the twenty-fifth, but the twenty-third, I think Marnie had us going in, and then you have, I think, some, I don't know about all you guys, but are you guys staying for Legislative Action Days?
That's, isn't that?
Okay, that starts on the twenty-ninth, and, okay, of January.
Not, well, I don't have a, no. What am I doing? I don't know.
All right, 'cause I'm, I'm going to Legislative Action Days. I will be there on the twenty-eighth, and then on the twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and thirty-first are the Legislative Action Days with League of Cities.
So, it needs to really, I mean.
It's either gotta be the, it's gotta be the, I mean, the twenty-second is the only day, or it's gonna have to be on the Monday, or Monday the fifth, or, or Tuesday the sixth of February.
I mean, by that time, you'll forgotten, you've forgotten. I, I mean, you, by the, you leave two weeks, or that's.
It's two weeks is what it is.
Could we do it, um, how do you feel about, oh, I gotta, um, do it on that Friday? Or that, or that Monday? Could that be?
Friday, the eighth, nineteenth?
The nineteenth, is that enough?
It's just one day. I, I kind of was hoping for a little, but I just wanna.
How about Monday?
So, what, what, Monday is the twenty-third, correct?
Twenty-second, it's the twenty-second.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I was looking at twenty-three, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, so it's the twenty-second, okay.
I will do it if I have to, but I would prefer to do it afterwards. I, I was.
You mean, like, on the following week?
Uh, yes.
You can't do it the following week. I mean.
Like, the, the first.
I'm gonna be in Tallahassee that day for Legislative Action.
I'm saying on the first, February first. Is that too late?
February first.
I mean, what if we don't let, what if these guys are horrible, and we have to do the whole thing again?
There's another point. What happens if three, none of, nobody likes, so, so we're gonna drag them out for two more weeks?
Well, we may, if we don't like them, we should know that upfront.
That's what I'm, well, hello, that's why the twenty-second.
On the twenty-second, I mean.
Well, I mean, we don't need to wait till the twenty-second if they're that bad.
Well, we, we have to be able, we have to be able to talk and meet, so, you gotta set a time, because then the public may want to know.
The earliest date that everybody's available.
That, I guess, the twenty-second, or?
Twenty-second of January.
January, right. It's either, Henry, it's either the twenty-second, or it's gonna have to be.
Beginning of February.
The Monday, the fourth, or the fifth of, I mean, excuse me, I'm sorry, the Monday the fifth, or Tuesday the sixth of February. But that's two weeks. But, oh, that's Sharon's tournament.
You can't do anything.
Oh, Lord.
December.
Gotta do that.
Okay, so, I mean, I, Mark, I don't want to do the twenty-second either, but if that's what works for everybody, we can do it.
That's December.
No, January.
No.
Only January.
Yeah, 'cause they're, they're not coming until the eighteenth or nineteenth.
All right, I can go along with it.
The seventeenth and eighteenth, Henry.
They're coming for those two.
I'll, I'll do that. I don't like it, but I think it's worth it, so I'll do it.
Twenty-second, five, five-thirty?
Yep.
Sooner the better.
Twenty-second, five-thirty.
Could we, is, is there any way?
Oh, Lord.
That we could do it a little bit earlier?
If I didn't work, but whatever.
Could you?
We could do it earlier.
Could we do it at four-thirty, five o'clock?
Okay, four-thirty, buddy, just to make you happy. It's okay, I'll just turn my customers away, no worries.
Say, okay, Sharon, let's split the difference, do it at five o'clock.
I don't care.
This is, I'm not, I'm not to show disrespect for you, but I think.
I was kidding.
Okay.
It was a joke.
So, the earliest we could do is?
Four-thirty, Sharon said.
Not the time.
The twenty-second.
The twenty-second of.
Of January.
Of January.
Right. They're here the seventeenth and eighteenth, so it would be Monday on the following week.
So be it.
Okay. And if, if, if Vice Mayor Mahoney agrees to four-thirty, can we all, is that okay?
Yes, it's delightful.
Man, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Man, we'll have to get cookies or pizza or something.
There you go.
And just some points about the, that meeting, the twenty-second. It will be an open public meeting. If the candidates are still in town, they would be, we can't prevent them from attending the meeting, uh, 'cause it's an open public meeting. What I normally would say is, I, you would ask them not to attend, and if they refuse, I would say you could all certainly take that into consideration when you're considering the candidate. So, you know, i- if they're still in town, uh, obviously, they might not be, because it's a Monday, you know, it's, it's a few days after the interviews. And then, the meeting itself, once, um, the count, once you all have discussed the, the end result, I think what we would be looking for is a motion from the council to initiate negotiations with Person X. And then, as long as there's three members of the council that support that motion, then we could move forward in the process that was discussed with, with, with me, Maria, and Councilmember Rosenthal, negotiating the contract with whoever the selected person is. And if there is no consensus, or you all would like to go back to the drawing board, then, you know, we can obviously go from there and see, see how that goes.
Just one byline. I have methods of my negotiation, which only includes me, the way I do things. Ha, having come to a conclusion, then I'll speak to you as to what I came up with, if you understand what I, what I do and how I do it. Okay? Thank you.
You're welcome. And then, obviously, any agreement would.
Are we all in agreement with that?
And then, any agreement, assuming you are, or something similar, any agreement would ultimately come back to council, and council would need to approve the full, the full, the full council, majority vote of the, of the council would need to approve the agreement.
I, I may have been daydreaming while you were saying this, but are we gonna do a selection process, sort of like when we did it before, where we have a list of our five names, and then the three candidates, and we, we rank them one, two, and three, and then you guys collect that, go, oh, so-and-so got three, or got five votes, or whatever? Do, do, is, we're gonna do that kind of a picking out thing, or we are gonna do what Henry does? Come tell you, hey, we like so-and-so?
Well, I think what you're gonna do is you're gonna come together and make that decision together. And if you want to do it, um, if you, I, so, if you want to do it as a, a, a vote, I mean, we can, a, a written vote, we could certainly do it, I would suggest doing it at that meeting, after you all have had a chance to, um, to discuss. If you do it that way, that, you will need to put your name on it, and that will become a public record.
Sorry, do you not understand?
I, I didn't understand that your question.
It's kind, it's kind of tricky. You might have to go back and look at how we, that last meeting, but we had, I think, two rounds, right, where we, we had a lot more candidates? So, we kind of narrowed it down from five to three, and then we had another, like, secret vote thing?
Yeah, a little ballot.
Yeah.
Not secret, not secret.
Well, it wasn't secret. Well, I mean.
I'd rather discuss it. What, I don't.
Well, we, we, I, I'm, I'm good with that, too. I mean, we.
I think it's, it's fine.
But, you know.
Just discuss, yeah, if we can't decide, three people, we're in serious trouble.
And you can discuss, and then ultimately, if, you can probably figure out if there's a consensus amongst the three, and somebody can make a motion to negotiate.
I, I would just mention something, I don't know, it's personal for me, at least, that, especially with, well, I won't say a name, but I thought it was important for us to have a five-to-o vote to select the manager, so that that person would start off with confidence, knowing that we all joined together to pick him. If we have, and God forbid this would ever happen, you know, a, a little bit of a disagreement, where we had a split vote, that wouldn't, that wouldn't bode well on the first day of work for the manager.
I'll, I'll tell you what happened. A few years back, when Seth got the job, there was a gentleman from Georgia, and I was down at the two, and the gentleman from Drift City, he says, you can't make up your minds. And he says, if I take this job, I'm the sport of all five of you, and since you can't make up your mind, I'm leaving.
He's out.
Yeah, he, he took himself out at the last minute. He said, it's all or nothing, it's not, it's not all of you, so adios.
So, that's.
I think it's a point well made. I think we can make that effort.
Just keep it in mind when voting, that's all.
Yes.
Maria, do you have anything? You want to say you've been through a lot of this?
No. She's quiet.
Okay, so we all on the same page, so we're picking the twenty-second at four-thirty, correct? All right.
I think that wraps up Tap-11. Oh, sorry.
Can we talk about the, the schedule that Evie put out for us to do, to meet them? Because I've got a sort of a, a question. Even though I know AJ and Terry are the most charming people we have here in the village, I'm, I, I would like to have, spend more time with them than just fighting my way through a crowd Wednesday night, and then Thursday. I would rather meet with them Wednesday during the day and let them do the tour on Thursday, so we have more time with them. I mean, the way I read the setup was, Wednesday, we're nowhere to be found, and we can show up when the community shows up, and that'd be me shoving Van aside, trying to get to somebody. And then Thursday, we're supposed to meet them for thirty-five minutes apiece. Am I reading, understanding this wrong? Did you see the layout? And then make, then make a decision. I'd like more time with each of them. I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels. Well, how does everybody else feel?
I don't.
You don't want to?
I don't need more time.
Oh, okay.
After they meet the public and make their presentations one at a time for.
Well, see, I do. I don't, I don't make a decision like that. That could be a mistake.
Well, Henry, when are they gonna make their presentation? Because it.
After they meet the public.
After the meet and greet, I mean, it was there. So, when are we gonna do that? We didn't.
We did it before.
No, they came to, they came and interviewed the next day with us. We met them the night here with the public, and then they came and we, each one of us interviewed. We never heard them speak. No, with Ted or Greg, we, it never happened.
No, it didn't.
This, um, so the, 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 well, for lack of a better term, the itinerary that, or schedule that, that Evie had laid out is, I'm looking, I know, is on Wednesday, the nineteenth, from ten to two, there's a tour of Isla Marata, and it, it says no council attendance for tour. It's provided by Chief Abel and Public Works Director Engelmeyer. Then there's a free time, that's from ten to two. Then there's two to five is free time for candidates, and then nine, five to nine is a meet and greet reception at the Aquatic Center next door. It says council attendance recommended. I would say, this is a very important decision. I, I would say it is highly recommended, if not required. I would think you would all want to be there for that.
We've all been there for the last two.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just saying in here, it says it recommended. I would highly, highly recommend that you be there. This is an. And then Thursday is required council attendance. At eight forty-five, there's breakfast and pastries, and then at nine, the interviews start with the schedule, it says schedule attached, but I guess there's, there's three of them, so I guess the, the, so there'll be individual interviews, that you will each have thirty minutes with, with each of the people, in, one-on-one individually. And then, you will break for lunch, and then there's a special call meeting at one-thirty, which is, which is now being bumped back to the twenty-second. So, by moving the special call meeting to the twenty-second, you do now open up your afternoon, if you'd like to, uh, this is just a suggestion. You all, you know, you all control this process, and if you would like to have more time with the, the candidates, or if you would like to modify it in any way, you know, obviously, we would certainly take direction, and we can advise Evie, so that she can, she can modify it accordingly.
I, I have one, I guess I'll call it a suggestion. To me, it's very, very important to have the sta, the, the citizens, any interested citizens, have an opportunity to learn more. Just in the schedule that we're describing, if we're gonna meet, uh, have a meet and greet here at five PM to seven, what if we had a council meeting, we opened a council meeting prior to that, each candidate could come here, he could be on TV, he could introduce himself, say whatever he wants, we could ask a few like questions, and then we could convene the meeting and head next door for snacks and drinks and so forth on, with the, with the, you know, whatever we call that. What is it called? Meet and greet, yes. What, but I, I just think it's important for the public to have a shot at this, whether they're watching from their couch at home, or they come here in person. And plus, the candidates, I think, would love to have an audience, you know?
I like that, because people who can't come to the meet and greet can still see them. I like that idea.
So, what, we give them an opportunity to have ten, fifteen minutes each?
Whatever they want.
They are gonna tell us why they want us to hire them?
Sure.
Can we also, on that, like, on that Wednesday morning, before they, I mean, can we meet them again sometime earlier in that day on Wednesday morning? Because it still only leaves us.
That's what you want.
What, what do you mean?
We can do whatever we want.
How do you feel? Okay, let me phrase it this way.
If I choose someone, then all of a sudden, I'm not too sure. Oh, sorry, thank you. If I'm not too sure about somebody, I will be when the time comes. The more, if, the more they stand up there and pitch their reason they want to be our manager, there's a lot of things to consider. I won't go into it, because I use these things, and I just tell them and disclose what I do publicly, but I judge somebody on a lot of different things, I really do. And just their demeanor, their demeanor under the context of being here, speaking publicly. I won't see that.
Yeah.
So, to give them an opportunity to speak for themselves. By the way, and not to get off the subject, how many people are we inviting? Do you know?
Three.
Three.
No, candidates, right? Is that what you're talking about?
How many people are we inviting to appear here in front of us?
Three.
Three.
Is that right?
Why? Didn't you know that?
No, I didn't know that. When the question was asked of me, I said all seven.
No, who has been three for a while?
Well, maybe it has. I just wasn't aware of that. I said all seven, because you never know.
I think you were the only one who said all seven, no?
Probably.
Is that right? The rest of us said three.
You never know, because I made mistakes in my life in hiring people, and somebody shows up and says, no, that can't happen, and he turns out to be the best guy.
Well, okay, so.
That's the reason I said all seven.
Well, you said all seven, but I think the other four of us said three, so I don't know if anybody wants.
I'm not saying to change it.
Oh, I don't know if, I don't care.
I just, that's.
Yeah.
That's my reasoning, because you never know.
No, you don't know, but it's still, seven people's pretty expensive, too.
So, Sharon, what do you want to see? Can you just tell me, tell us how, what you'd like to see happen on that Wednesday and Thursday?
I sleep in. I, I would sort of rather, I like the idea of bringing them in public first. I do like that. I just don't think thirty minutes, for me, isn't enough, because.
What do you want?
And that's on Thursday.
Thirty minutes is on Thursday.
Let them get up Thursday morning and show them Isla Marata while we sleep in, and.
What if we had lunch with them after the thirty-minute interviews, a group lunch?
On what, Thursday?
Yeah.
Or what if we do?
There is a group lunch.
It is.
After the interviews.
I didn't understand that, sorry.
Well, so that's still only.
So, could we do a lunch on Wednesday? How about that? Those people have to eat. How about if we do lunch with them on Wednesday?
Well, what time would that be? It has to work with the.
Yeah, well.
When do they want to, I mean, I would like to spend more time with them.
We can, so, how, tell me exactly what you'd want, Sharon. Tell, you, tell us. We, we're.
Let's see. Um, I'd be happy Wednesday with doing maybe from ten to two with them, lunch, a little bit of time, and then come back for the meeting on Wednesday, and then of time, and then come back, uh, for the meeting on Wednesday and then the meet and greet and then see them again on Thursday. This is a big decision. I know Henry can look at somebody and know if he wants to hire them. I, I don't. I really want to talk to this person because what I don't want is for the same thing to happen that has happened the last two times. I, I don't want to go through that.
Could we do Wednesday, like, breakfast and then they go off on their tour, they come back? We meet them for lunch?
What time is breakfast to you?
Well, how about?
6:00 AM.
8:30, 9, 9 to 10, breakfast?
I don't care.
Yeah, well, I don't care. It's what you want. But I, I personally, I don't, I don't, I don't know if I have four hours of conversation I could have.
Okay, 9 to 10. Can, can we do 9 to 10 for breakfast? And then they can go do their thing? And then we set up a time to come back in here before the meet and greet? Would an hour be fine for three of them?
I would think so.
I would think so.
You're, you're talking 20 minutes of, of discussion. I mean, 20 minutes.
Each person?
Yeah, for an hour, to fill an hour. So, um, you know, it might be less than an hour. Yeah, but, but yeah, you mean, obviously, the, as I understand it, you're looking, they're, they're going to be, just so Evie has the understanding so she can convey it to them, uh, for the, basically, opening a public meeting, it's really for them to kind of pitch themselves. And then, uh, from there, we'll go straight into the.
Meet and greet?
Meet and greet for, for the community. Obviously, the council will be, will be able to, will be able to be in attendance, too, but then the community can also be in attendance and can, can meet the, the candidates as well.
Okay.
So is.
And what, Maria, you said from 5 to 9, right? Is that what you said? The meet and greet?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're talking Monday, or Wednesday, the 17th.
Correct.
9 to 10 AM breakfast.
Yeah.
At.
Do we want to?
I was going to ask you that.
I don't know. Does it have to, it has, does it have to be?
Well, could, could we bring something in here?
I was going to suggest catering something.
Yeah, I, I'd like, like the bagel place or.
If you're all together, then obviously.
So breakfast at the community center, 9 AM to 10 AM.
Yep.
Wednesday.
Here.
Then they'll go on a tour from 10 AM to 2:00 PM.
And we can leave.
With AJ and Terry. Are we okay with AJ and Terry?
Yeah.
Um, usually what we do is freebie, we use their van. Freebie, let's, I'm just letting you know. Never know, there might be an issue.
This says the new fire rescue van.
Since it's freebie.
Let me ask you a question. This meet and greet for four hours, do you think that's too long and maybe we should have them come here from 5 to 6?
Look, they had to, people had.
I wasn't done talking yet.
No, they have to shut it down. We've been to, I mean.
Oh, okay. Well, that's why you're always the last to leave.
I think it's longer than the other meet and greets we've done.
It was like 7:30, 8 o'clock.
Well, what I was going to say was maybe 5 to 6, them in here, and then 6 to 9 out there.
Yes, let's do that. 5 to 6 in here and then 6 to 9.
You like to be the last one there, I know that, but.
Who, who, me?
Yes.
No.
So the 5 to 6.
Would be here.
When they're going to be on.
Zoom.
A screen, that's going to be a special call meeting.
It's in here.
Just so you know. Okay.
And then from 6 to 9, they can have, is that enough time for you to have a couple of cocktails?
Is the meet and greet.
Depends upon who caters.
There you go.
We've had a good attendance with the public.
100%.
When the last two.
Oh, I've invited a lot of people to come. I want their opinions, I really do.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
A portion of this, what we're doing, is going to be remote?
No, 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 they're going to, if people, what, they're going to come here, we're going to be here. It's just like a regular council meeting, special call meeting, for them to get up and tell us about their self.
When you say on the screen.
But the special call, there will be mo, remote.
Yeah, for Zoom.
That people can view it if they can't make it to the meet and greet.
Oh, okay. So that's for, for the public.
Yes.
Like they can now, Henry. They can use Zoom.
Just wanted to know that.
Yeah.
So then on Thursday, the 18th, uh, there's going to be, it just says 8:45 to 9 AM, breakfast and pastries. We usually set that up in the fire department where the interview views are. Do you want more time for breakfast?
Well, I wouldn't mind a little bit longer time for the interview. It's only 30 minutes for the interview. Could we have like 40 minutes, 45?
So could we? Do we need to do breakfast?
Forty-five?
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, you don't want to do that on empty stomach.
I'm never food mongers here.
No, no, but you got to meet the candidates. We're there, too. You're sitting there talking. So I think till, I'd say 8:45 to 9:15, Maria, on the, that way it gives us 30 minutes to chit chat with them.
Okay.
So then interviews start at 9:15? And you know that two of you won't be interviewing.
I know.
At a time, right? Okay.
What do you mean two of us?
There's only three of us.
It's only three candidates, so two of you will be waiting.
Two of us are idle.
Oh, okay.
So you'd like 45-minute interview times?
Yes.
Well, 45, that's, okay, I got it now.
So we'll work that out. We'll work out the schedule, so.
45 minutes and then the next two would be 45 minutes whoever didn't get to interview.
And then whenever that ends, it ends. They leave or whatever and then.
And then we come back Monday.
Monday.
Okay, I think, can you go over at 1 without us all saying anything, the way the schedule should look, so I can write it down?
Okay, Wednesday, January 17th, 9 AM to 10 AM breakfast here at the community center. That would also have to be noticed as a public meeting, but we won't broadcast if that's okay.
You mean, there's no Zoom?
Right.
Right.
But the public could come if they wanted, it's not, I mean, whatever.
10 AM to 2:00 PM is the tour given by staff and the three candidates. Then from 5 to 6:00 PM, we'll have another special call in here where the candidates will be on Zoom or, you know, and then.
It's broadcast, it's televised.
Right, it'll be broadcast.
Televised.
And then 6 to 9 will be the meet and greet here. Then on Thursday, January 18th, breakfast at the Fire Station 20, which is next to Village Hall, 8:45 AM to 9:15 AM. Then interviews will start and, um, there'll be 45-minute interviews.
Where are the interviews done?
In the fire station.
In the different offices on the first floor.
I'm thinking we're in the bay.
Derek Paul's office.
Yeah.
Maybe the chief's office, whatever.
I'm thinking they're in the bay or something.
I mean, you know what, guys? If we want to start at 9, I mean, are we okay? I mean, do we want?
It's good, we're good.
We're leaving the way it is? Okay, good, okay.
All right, great, that was very good.
All right, so we all, and Maria, I'm sure Evie's going to email this to us.
Yes.
At the whole schedule.
And she did say tentative schedule when she sent out the email.
Right.
Just so you know that she, she knew that there would be changes.
So.
Knows us well. Are we, are we done with this, uh, D now, tab 11? Are we okay? Anybody else have anything else they want to discuss?
That was good.
What happens if one doesn't use a fork? I'm just kidding.
Gets un-hired.
Go ahead.
Okay, so can we move on? Let's move on to, uh, tab E. The discussion regarding Florida Commerce Hurricane evacuation baseline modeling, perspective modeling for potential future B-Pass allocations, tab 12. And that is Maria.
Yes.
What tab is that?
12. So Florida statutes requires that the, all of the local governments within, within the Florida Keys area of critical state concern, um, which excludes all the local governments except Key West, which is its own area of critical state concern, that the local governments establish goals, objectives, and policies that protect public safety and welfare in the event of a natural disaster by maintain a, maintaining a hurricane evacuation clearance time for permanent residents of no more than 24 hours. So that's the current law. Uh, Florida Commerce, previously known as DEO and previously known as D.
DCA.
DCA. Has, in its capacity, as the state land planning agency assists the local governments in the Keys in meeting this mandatory requirement by updating the, the data for the Florida Keys evacuation model. And, um, so the last time this model was, uh, reviewed and established, it was in 2013. And there's a requirement that, um, there be a 10, every 10 years, it's, it's reviewed. So in 2023, recently, Florida Commerce, um, provided, um, a report with their revised modeling, uh, findings. Um, they look at, uh, census, census information, whatever's recently available, and, uh, the 10-year building permit allocation, um, activity. So I sent an email, I think it was last Friday, with the Florida Commerce's, uh, final report. And, um, so the, the local governments are being asked to consider the information and then ultimately determine whether there's any desire to accept more units from the state, um, depending on those hurricane evacuation times. And then, um, determine which entities and, um, resident types, uh, might be included in different phases. When Ed was here, I think he spoke with some or all of you about the model. Ed was encouraged by the county administrator to speak with village council before his departure as interim manager to help you all understand what this all meant. Um, the county administrator's position is that the local governments in the Keys need to have the same, uh, they need to agree on what the request to the, ultimately to the Florida legislature will be. You know, if you'll remember with wastewater, there was some detriment to the Keys because the entities weren't all agreeing. So learning from that, the best approach is that the local governments all agree. So we were encouraged to, the Monroe County BOCC had a meeting yesterday and, um, made some preliminary decisions on the modeling scenario to communicate to the Florida legislature. And so the village and the other local governments are being asked to, for their legislative bodies to make a decision in time for the new legislative session, which starts on January 9th. January 9th is our next council meeting date, so there's not time, you know, we need to, a decision this evening on, um, the modeling scenarios that this council would prefer. Um, there's, so yesterday at their, um, the BOCC meeting, the BOCC did pass a resolution where they agreed that Key West should be included in the modeling and that mobile homes, mobile home residences should be, uh, required to evacuate in phase one. So, you know, depending on those scenarios, whether Key West was included or mobile homes had to go in phase two, it changes the hours of evacuation. So the information in your agenda package shows, um, it kind of isolated the information on, on the second chart with the Florida, uh, Key West being included and mobile homes being required to evacuate in phase one. As far as any unit determinations or how many units, um, the local governments wish to accept, uh, there, the BOCC agreed that they would just request of the Florida legislature that that not be addressed until later, potentially even until 2025. So what we are asking of council today is whether council agrees with, uh, this, the decision basically that the BOCC made with regard to the modeling components that will currently be communicated to the Florida legislature.
So it would be what they did, what, the way I understood it, is that they added Key West and the mobile homes, just what you just said.
Right.
Yeah, include Key West in phase two.
Right.
And so the request of the county is for this council to support, um, their position related to the things that Maria just.
And the mobile homes are in phase one.
Yes, they urge that they be in phase one and that anything else be dealt with at a later, a future date, once the public has, has had an opportunity to, uh, chime in, basically.
Council?
I, I agree with that. I think it makes the most sense, leaving Key West out. I mean, why would we do that? That's nuts. And then having the mobile home folks leave early, that makes safety, it's great. I mean, I, I think I said all I need to say, it's smart. Let's do it.
Henry? Any comment?
My concern is. It'll be used for additional building. And it will be. Because they'll say, well, we have a proper evacuation time. That supports construction, building, residence, whatever. And, uh, I have to think through that a little bit more for that reason. So. That's me.
All right, Elizabeth?
Oh, well, I certainly can support this request to, to join in on that count, on the county's recommendation. And then additionally, I wonder if there might be a consensus to get in front of the conversation that I think you're referring to, Henry, which is, um, which is what, what will we do or what is our opinion about this potential, um, receipt of, of allocations? And, and I don't know exactly what that looks like, but maybe Jennifer could lead that or, I, I, I mean, I can imagine us getting to the 11th hour and everyone's hair is on fire when we're, you know, trying to make a plan for this potential. But in the, so that, I just might throw that out there, maybe we can bring, circle back on that. But in the meantime, I obviously recommend, suggest this or rec, agree to this.
I agree.
Agree. I, I, I agree, too. And, and when I was asked, I, I said, you know, definitely, you know, whatever, if we do get a few permits, whatever, that we, it was taken out 20 years or something. It wasn't like we're just going to flood the, there's going to be a, a long timeframe. Yeah.
And the planning department is beginning to do an analysis of the lots that are out there, the vacant lots, uh, what sort of, uh, vegetation, you know, surveys? And then, um, you know, they'll come up with a number ultimately of what is buildable.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to have that, that data, that, that detail of information before I spit out a number. It's a, you know.
And that, I know that Jennifer and Daniel have been working on that based upon the directives of the council from, I think it was the last meeting. And Jennifer and I actually spoke about it earlier today, um, and she's hoping to have it, uh, back before you all in January. I don't want to speak for her, but she can.
So, so Jennifer, before you start, can I ask council, are we okay if we let, since this is something we are going to vote on for the county, can we let, can we have public comment on this?
Yeah, and I was, I was going to actually ask if, uh, since it's a formal thing to, that there be a motion and a second, and that would also, uh, trigger public comment on that.
Okay, Jennifer, you got the floor.
Thanks, I just wanted to give a little bit of preliminary data. First, uh, just to reiterate what John said, uh, a couple meet, our last meeting, I think it was, uh, we brought forth the, uh, list of properties owned by the village that we deemed, uh, appropriate for affordable housing. And then the council asked us to take that back and look at the habitats. And that's what Daniel's been working on. And, uh, just before he left this afternoon, um, he sent me the draft of that report, 60-page report. So I will, uh, be reviewing that, um, over my Christmas break. It'll be, um, in front of you, um, at your January 9th meeting. I know that's not the land use meeting, but Daniel is going on vacation on the 11th and so he will not be here. So I figured you would want him here when you looked at that in case you had questions. So that's why we're going to bring that back on the 9th. Just a couple points. Megan, who does our GIS and is also our floodplain manager, who's amazing at, you amazing at, you know, figuring out some of this data for us, did a quick analysis. We have 1,101 vacant lots, which includes all, you know, strips and, you know, Tavonero and Bay Bottom lots, every, you know, piece of vacant property in the village, that's what that is.
That would be vacant parcels by tax ID number?
That's correct.
Okay.
And she broke that down into residential lots by zoning. That is, that would be 272 of those. So that's as far as we've gotten so far. We haven't done any of the habitat yet, but we're already, we're at 272 residential vacant lots that are buildable by zoning. So we are going to look a little bit further into the habitat and see what else we can pull out of that. So that's where we're at right now. And just to give you a little bit, another piece of information, 61 of those lots are already in B pass, so that's 29% of the 272.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Would it be useful to find out when those lots were purchased? Those, those vacant residential lots?
Absolutely, we can do that for you.
Does that seem like a helpful piece of information?
Mm-hmm.
Definitely.
That'd be great.
Okay, council, any other questions before I open public comment? Okay, Marnie, I'm going to, let's open public comment.
Okay, I have Van signed up, just so you can assign him. And Jerry.
Evening again, I'm Van Kadenhead. This is very serious. First off, I'm, I'm glad that the Board of County Commissioners decided to include Key West, which was, it didn't make any sense not to at all. So I, I'm glad that you all agree with that. And what really concerns me though, is that we, now, we have a six-month moratorium on building and, and you guys are talking about getting, trying to get additional R O G O from Tallahassee. And we have been overbuilt for so long, we do not need any more R O G O permits down here. We've, we've, 2023 is the end of the program as far as R O G O and B pass was my understanding. Now, to, to try to squeeze in anything else after this point, plus the fact that we're under a moratorium now for accepting new permits, for applications anyway, for new permits, I would ask that in your communications to Tallahassee, you indicate that, that we have a moratorium on, on building here and we do not require any more R O G O building permits in Alamoata. We have 300 affordable housing permits that were given, which can be used as administrative relief for any taking suit that happened, you know, in the future. But I just don't see the, the purpose in going along with asking Tallahassee for any more R O G O. We are, have been overbuilt, we were overbuilt at the time the carrying capacity study came online, which is years ago. We were, it showed that we had outgrown our, our infrastructure, outgrown our traffic, outgrown our, our water demand. All those things years ago showed us that we were headed in the wrong direction. And we have far exceeded going over the line since then. So to ask for anything more is nothing more than just greed. That's all it is. It can't be squeezing, and I use this again for the county, 20 feet of cotton in a 10-foot sack. You have too many people here now, you have too much traffic here now, you have too much water demand here now, you have too much garbage here now. And, and if you go up to the county line and start at Florida City and go up two or three counties, that's what's going to block off everything from Mallory Square to the Georgia County line. Cause it's, it's been overdone, it's been let go. I don't think the Florida Commerce is doing a thing to, to try to stifle the overdevelopment of Monroe County. And that's why I think the responsibility for the environment of Monroe County should be taken away from them. They have not done their job and it should be given to the Department of Environmental Protection. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Van. Jerry?
Good afternoon, this is the first time I've spoken here. My name is Jerry O'Callaghan, retired senior planner from Monroe County Emergency Management. I was the county representative to the South Florida Regional Planning Commission during the evolution and growth and the study of all of this. I concur with including Key West and the mobile homes as far as evacuation efforts go. I would be interested to know what the stance of the naval station and their personnel down there is, whether that's included in this evacuation decision. That might be something that we would like to look into. That's about all I have to say right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Jerry.
I also have Mr. Wischmeyer on Zoom, I'm going to pull him up. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Wischmeyer.
Yes, Joe Wischmeyer, Plantation Geek. I would like to applaud you all for going along with the county and including Key West and the mobile homes in the evacuation plan. I totally agree with Van and I spoke earlier, how we have overgrown our water, our sewer, and our schools throughout the county. So adding any more permits is just going to add to that. Compounded to that, we know that we're going to have construction on the water main for the next at least 15 to 20 years. That too will also hinder the evacuation process. Let's not forget what happened with this little storm that we just had, where the seaweed completely covered U S One up on the stretch and you can see the seaweed lines on the fence line very, very high. So adding any more permits at this time just seems to me to be a little ridiculous because we have outgrown what we have. Thank you.
Okay, Marnie, anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay. And hey, Jerry, I, I just wanted to address that you about the name-
I said I-
Did I? Um, I, I know, I can't remember whether it's Irma or what anyways, and they did, I, I knew some of the families there and they took them out of here like, I think I was told, uh, it was like a week early, a week before, they were already moving families, you know, from Sigsby or Boca Chica, some of the people like that. So I don't, but we need to, we probably should look into that.
Do you have a motion, evacuation player?
Okay.
I think it would be good for us to know what, what it is.
Okay.
It's not spelled out.
Okay.
One thing I did mention as far as-
Come on back up, Jerry.
Sorry.
You only used a minute anyways, so.
Credit. Um, as far as infrastructure goes, when we used to have migration issues, not, not, in 80, I wasn't with the county, I started in 93, but then we had reoccurring migration issues. We had worries about our infrastructure and the taxing of our sewage, water, traffic, and I was tasked with studying that while I was employed. And it was tremendous, it was worthy of consideration, which only goes to show you that what we have to deal with now, being an international tourist destination, it makes no sense, it's, it's horse sense to, to see that we do not need more building down here, do not need more people down here than we already really have. I mean, if we're an international tourist destination, let's treat ourselves that, as special as that and try and be our own managers.
Right, right. Thank you, Jerry. All right, so Maria, can we, can we, well, can we talk to Roman or we find out with that or, or somebody with the Navy, the Coast Guard, the military in Key West?
The Navy, the Navy is included in the model currently.
Oh, they are?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, so we don't need to worry about the Navy then, okay?
And if you all are interested, I have a motion that I could recommend if you're interested in supporting. Okay, my, I would recommend, it'd be a motion to support Monroe County Resolution Number 572-2023 and directing the village manager and village attorney to convey this support to their respective counterparts at the county.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So moved, as John just said.
You're a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. All right, so now we are on to tab 16, correct, John?
Yes, we are, this, so we're, it is resolutions, we are, it's a resolution of the Village Council of Alamoata, Village of Islands, Florida, updating procedures for the village council and providing for an effective date. This was on consent, so it's probably not on the, uh, just probably not a note as to who's, who can, who's presenting, but I can discuss it. This was, uh, the, one, the one update in your packet, there's a, both a clean version and a redlined version. It's on page 12 of the actual procedures. This was based upon the directive of the council in November to move the, the timeframe for additions or deletions by council members. It currently stands at 24 hours. Instead, this would move it to 5:00 PM on the Thursday before regular council meetings or 48 hours, not including weekends or holidays for any non-emergency special call meetings.
Okay, so, so basically it's two, okay, to make additions to the agenda from 24 to two business days, right, John?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right. All right, council, any questions? No? No? Henry, any questions?
No.
Okay. All right, so let's see, why don't we have some public comment then, open it up for public comment?
I don't have anyone signed up.
Okay.
I'm going to go, I'm going to go along with it.
I appreciate the moving it out a bit, but so many times, we've had things pulled at the last minute when there's a room full of people here waiting to speak to it and one of you decides that you want to have it pulled. I don't think we should do that. And to add new things, 48 hours is, is, if we, if we had a, a meeting, two meetings a month, it would allow a little bit of space between what's, what's going, going on in here and what the, the, the general public is aware of through a newspaper. Our, the, the papers come out on Thursday and we have our, this, today is Thursday. So we're not really going to have too much coverage about what happens in this meeting until next Thursday. And the public's not going to be aware of what's happening in here if we just have a short amount of time to make additions to the, to the agenda. So I think, I, I like seven days, I like a week. You know, 48 hours, if it's an emergency, I could see something like that or, you know, if it's, if it's an emergency, you can do it right now. I mean, just with a vote, you guys can decide that you want to discuss something that's emergency and that'll be understood by the public, that you want to get it done, it's an expedited necessary item. But to, to put things on without having it been in the public, advertised in the public in a newspaper, the Keys Weekly or the Free Press, one of the two, it puts us at a disadvantage having a meeting on Tuesday and a meeting on Thursday. And I will once again urge you to change your schedules to two meetings a month, two Thursdays, the first Thursday and the third Thursday, or the second Thursday and the fourth Thursday, however you want it. It may be more convenient for the council and the staff to do it the way that Ms. Mahoney suggested, but frankly, I don't think it's working. I don't think having 30 items in an agenda that we have to meet on, on Tuesday and Thursday now to finish up the last 10 items that you didn't get to on Tuesday, I don't think that's beneficial to good government in any way and it's, it confuses the issue for the people who are trying to follow it in the public. Thank you very much.
Again, Marnie, any other public comment?
Let me double check on Zoom. No, sir.
No, okay, public comment is now closed. Council, any other, any further discussion?
I move to approve.
Okay, second, do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen.
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, so we are now moving on to tab 22. Maria?
Let me s-
Oh, John, I'm sorry.
I'm just going to read the title really-
I'm sorry.
It's a resolution of the Village Council of Alamoata, Village of Islands, Florida, approving the final ranking and recommendation of the Audit Committee for the selection of the village's auditor. Authorize the village manager as the council's designated, negotiate a professional auditing service contract for future consideration of the village council and providing an effective date.
Okay, Maria.
Through the F Y 2122 audit, the village had the same auditors for 10 years and that was Malden and Jenkins. So when their five-year engagement, their second five-year engagement terminated, staff requested direction from council on whether council wanted to renew again with Malden and Jenkins for a five-year period or go out to bid. The council directed that we should go out to bid and whenever that occurs, Florida statutes requires that the local government or the village council establish a, an auditor selection committee. So that's what happened in April of this year, the committee was established by resolution. And the committee was comprised of four members. Florida statutes requires that a village council member serve as chair and so councilwoman Elizabeth Jolen was the chair of the committee. And there were three residents, Gail Gargano, Rochelle Keller, and Joan Schultz. The committee held its first meeting on, in September 13th of 2023 to review the draft RFP for auditing services. And then by September 21st, the RFP was issued. With this, with these services, the village can request cost proposals, but those have to be considered separate from the qualifications proposals themselves. So the committee evaluates the proposals based on the qualifications and then scores the cost proposals afterwards. So the deadline for the proposals was August 16th of 2023. And through their, the committee held a meeting on November 3rd of 2023. And through their evaluation of the proposals, we did receive four proposals. One was from Malden and Jenkins, which as I explained, was our previous auditor. And then there were, there was a proposal from a firm called Christopher Smith Leonard and Stannell, they are out of Bradenton, so is Malden and Jenkins. Clifton Larson Allen, I think they're out of Fort Myers, and then Markham, which is out of Miami, and they were the ones that also did the wastewater audit. Ultimately, the committee determined, they scored Malden and Jenkins with a total of 370 points. And then Christopher Smith Leonard and Stannell with 350 points. But the committee is making the recommendation that the village council select the second-ranked firm, Christopher Smith Leonard and Stannell, in an effort to change auditors. A lot of times, you know, firms and local governments are encouraged to change auditors because there's a belief that it'll lead to, you know, more independence, you know, things like that. So as part, if council agrees with the recommendation, one requirement is that the adopting resolution specify why the second-ranked firm is being selected over the first-ranked firm. And that reason is in an effort to, you know, rotate auditors. In your agenda package though, Malden and Jenkins, we did not have a, what is that called, the silence thing?
Code of Silence?
Code of-
Code of Silence.
The Code of Silence. So Malden and Jenkins, they did watch the meeting and understood that they were ranked first, but the recommendation was otherwise. And so they did provide a letter to kind of explain how the thinking now is it's really not a good thing to switch auditors, that sometimes it can lead to less objectivity or, you know, so, so that was included in your agenda package. Ultimately, the cost proposal for Malden and Jenkins, if there was only one single audit, their total cost proposal was $60,000. And then the second-ranked firm, it's $54,000. So the second-ranked firm does have the lowest cost proposal. So council is just asked to, you know, make a decision on which, whether to go with the recommendation of the auditor selection committee or whether to make another selection. And I did include the two proposals in your agenda packages.
Counsel?
I'll make a motion to accept the committee's choice.
Okay, anybody, anybody want any discussion or do I hear?
You have, you have to do, deal with the, either, well, you have to deal with the motion first, so you can, it needs to be, if there's a second, and then obviously we'll continue with discussion and public comment.
I just, a comment, I just feel a little uneasy about taking one in second place over one that's ranked higher, especially after they've done a good job for us in the last 10 years. It almost seems like we're penalizing them for good performance. But I do understand the flip side of this, which is the argument that, you know, fresh set of eyes and fresh, fresh approach to this might be beneficial. So I just made a comment, I don't know where I'm at on it.
I, I would make a comment as well, if that's appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, John, are we all right? I mean, right now, there's a motion, a motion, but no-
Yeah, I mean, you have, I mean, I would, as a, or you would deal with the second, first, but we've already had comments, I don't think it would be fair to not have comments for others.
Yeah, this is, I mean, I can second the motion and we can, we can kill it or whatever, so I'll second it, but just for the sake of discussion, I, I was on that committee and, and I really would acknowledge the work of Gail Gargano, Rochelle Keller, and Joan Schultz. They did a great job with lots of skill and expertise. And, you know, it was an interesting conversation because we all, you know, we did, we, we had this very conversation about, we've got a very qualified group and in Malden and Jenkins, they rated the highest. And then it was kind of a long and windy conversation about really a response to the potential for public perception, would, would, would there be any benefit in changing auditors just for the sake of the community and, and how, if there's any perception of, you know, would everyone feel better? would everyone feel better if we had a different set of eyes? You know, I, that was kind of where the, it wasn't, we felt like the groups were, were quite similar in expertise, I mean, very similar. So it really is up to you all. And I, while I seconded this, I certainly would, I mean, no one found any red flags with Malden and Jenkins, this was simply a suggestion for just perception. But, so I, I mean, I'm completely open, and I would leave it to you all.
You got anything?
No, I, I would think that because a lot of places do change after a long time, that this other company isn't taking it like we're punishing them, it's just a procedure, and I agree with going with the, with the committee pick.
All right, so let's open public comment. Any public comment, Marnie?
I don't believe so. Let me double check Zoom. No, sir.
Okay, all right, public comment is now closed. All right, so we have, unless there's any further discussion, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Marnie, call the roll, please.
Can I have one more question?
Sure.
I don't know if it would help in this, I hate to take the responsibility almost, but I don't know if Maria, if you have any further comments on, because, I mean, you're, you're, you're the finance department, I don't know if you have any comments on it as well. I thought the discussion was enlightening when we, when we were having this conversation with the group.
No, I, I would say that I don't have a concern either way. I, I know that we can work with either firm, and that one firm doesn't compromise just because they've been here ten years, they don't compromise on, you know, their professional responsibilities. And I don't, I don't think it would be any different, but I also don't fear a new, new auditing firm. And I certainly can understand that, I think it would, if we do go with a new firm and they're going to have the same findings, which is no findings on our audit, then I think that serves us better as far as staff.
Okay. All right, so no further questions from counsel? Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
No.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pender?
Yes.
The motion passes four to one.
All right, so we are going to move on to twenty-three.
Next up, tab twenty-three is a resolution of the Village Council of Alamoata, Village of Islands, Florida, approving the mediated settlement agreement relating to the Glynn property described herein, authorizing village officials to execute, deliver, and implement the terms and conditions of the settlement agreement, providing for authorization and providing for an effective date. As, as you all may recall, a few months ago, I believe it was in September, we brought forward a, an agreement that was previously agreed to through mediation with the prior village manager at a price of two million dollars to acquire this Glynn property. The village council rejected that settlement agreement, but did give, did make comments and give some direction that if they were open to, if the Glynn heirs were open to resolving this at a lower price, that the council might be open to that. So we come back before you today with a significantly lower price at the total of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is for the acquisition of a property of ninety-plus acres. Much of it is high-quality hammock, some of it does, does front the road. The settlement agreement is, for all intensive purposes, is substance-wise is the same as it was presented to you all before. The only difference, obviously, is the purchase price, and there's a new closing date, because the old closing date called for a closing by the end of December. Obviously, that's not realistic, given the, the date that we are at now, so it has a different closing date. The, there has been, the village did seek an appraisal of this property. The property appraised at a value of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. The settlement would also resolve any and all claims in, in the litigation or that could have, that have been made in the litigation or could have been made in the litigation, and that would, would resolve the lawsuit that, or the litigation that, that the Glyns had initiated against the village. So we, we are here before you to, with the resolution and proposed settlement. If the settlement agreement does, is approved, we'll move forward with the real estate closing, which we will handle, you know, we can get, take, take place and with a target date of the closing to occur by the end of January. The, I should, I would also point out, I know there's been discussion about vacant lots and vacant property in the village as it relates to potential takings claims and things like that. Obviously, this would take a number of lots off of, off of that and put it within the control of the village. There is also, I spoke with Peter about the Monroe County Land Authority to see if there was a potential for, to seek reimbursement from them, because not all of this is on the Florida Forever list, but some of the parcels are. Theoretically, there is that opportunity, but I will, I don't want to get the council's hopes up, because in the past, the, the land authority has told us that based upon the, the price of this, it wasn't worth it for them. I, I don't, paraphrasing, I don't, they didn't use those words, but, but I just want to say that, because I don't want to get the council's hopes up that, you know, we, we could potentially get, get money back. I, I would, I would say I would proceed, assuming we wouldn't, and then if we did, great, we, you know, there, there's money back. There are also, when we were originally going through the, this process, we had asked the planning department, this was predated, Jennifer, we had asked the planning department as to are there any development, potential development rights that could occur on this property? The opinion that we got, if they weren't allowed to develop, would be one point one eight development rights. So I think, you know, you can obviously take that into consideration for use of that for administrative relief or things like that as well.
Okay.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So what, how much money did Florida Forever say they'd go? Was it three fifty or something?
Their appraisal was, I mean, we haven't seen their appraisal, their, their appraisals, since it goes through the state program, are, are protected under public records, but it's my understanding it was around, it was around three fifty for their appraisal. And I don't think it took into account potential development rights. But that was what, that was what theirs was. So the max that they would even be able to contribute if they were willing to would be up to that appraised amount. Also, their appraisal did, only included the part, the parcels that are on the Florida Forever program, so it was not for the entire group or the, the entire property that we're talking about here, it was for a subset of that.
Yeah. So, John, I, I'd personally like to get a hold of Wilton Simpson's office to see if there's a way, or his number-one assistant to see, because they got so many programs right now that they are, you know, avidly purchasing properties like this or, or reimbursing, you know, so we could, Peter could look into that, I can hook you, hook you up with his assistant, his number-one assistant. And, and see, because hey, if they give us our money back, I mean, the property. And another thing, when people are saying tonight about, you know, we're, we're getting built, and people are saying, you know, we, we have no green space, here we go, right there, ninety acres that is conservation, that, um, there's saltwater crocs there, there's rosette spoonbills in there, I don't know about white pelicans, but there's a lot of species of, of native animals that are on this property. So, and it is, there's roughly, I don't know, Peter'd have to tell me, but there's ten-plus acres of, of hardwood hammock that, I mean, very premier hammock there.
I've, I've talked to Peter, I think he's very excited about the potential acquisition of the property.
So anyways, I've said my piece, counsel?
Well, I have a whole lot to say about this. I don't know where to begin, just to say how excited I am to have the opportunity and the privilege to vote on this, to, to approve it tonight. I would, I am making a motion for approval, I'd like to do that. I would say that I, I've been involved with this property on behalf of the village, for I think it came up when I was on the LPA in twenty-eighteen or twenty-nineteen, and Mr. Glynn came with a proposal to amend the land use maps and, and the zoning and the flume maps, and we denied that because we didn't want to do any development there. And I, I think it's fair to say, well, later on in, in April of this year, based upon the claim that the Glynn family filed, we were required, the village was required to participate in a mediation to try to resolve this, and I invited myself along to go with Ted to meet in John's office there in Coral Gables to do that mediation with the Glynn family and their lawyer. And I got to meet Mr. Glynn, and when we were, when the lawyers were beating each other up in there, he and I sat and had friendly chit-chat, and if he's watching, I, I hope he can, can hear this. He was the consummate gentleman, the nicest kind of grandfatherly person you'd ever want to meet, but what he shared with me is that his family doesn't actually want to, did not actually want to develop the property, they were just trying to get, you know, more rights out of it and more value. But they actually wanted to make this a conservation property. And if you read through the document, you'll see in there that they have a right to participate in the naming of the property as some, whatever it is, you know, the Glynn family conservation reserve or something, however they want to do that, because they're committed, like we are, to protecting it, and they understood the value of that. So for that reason, I think this is a win for the Glynn family, it's certainly a win for the village, but most importantly, it's a win for the environment. I took a little time before the meeting to go online to look on the property appraiser's website and to see how many parcels are there. And if you don't, if you're not familiar with this, Mr. Glynn's uncle submitted a plat, got a plat approved for this. It's an antiquated plat, it's never been developed. If you look at visual overhead, you'll, you won't see any development, it looks just like it did when God made it, whenever he made it. And so, but however, if you go on the property appraiser's website, I counted exactly one hundred and fifty tax parcels that, separate parcels that have a tax ID number. So for the number that we got from Jennifer earlier, which I believe was one thousand one hundred and one, subtract one fifty from that. And, and so the, not all of these lots were developable, so, developable, but we're taking that whole thing off that list in one fell swoop. And so, again, I personally thank the Glynn family for what they're doing, they should be honored for their working with us on this, and when it comes time to name it, I hope they can come down and we can have a nice ceremony and, and put up a nice plaque or sign or something honoring them for what they helped us to accomplish here tonight, so.
Do we know when, was it nineteen fifty-five when those were plotted?
It was either the late fifties or the early sixties, which, to your point, Elizabeth, earlier, when you had asked Jennifer about finding out when people acquired lots, this is one of the older ones, and that is a critical factor in determining where this might go and corridor something down the road, so I'll leave it at that. But this is, this is a, a big win, everybody's going to win on this. So obviously, I'm happy, as I said, and I, I hope that you will support that as well. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I appreciate that explanation, and I second your motion.
Thank you.
Okay, so you already made the motion? You said you were going to make-
I did make it, I did, I couldn't wait.
All right, Elizabeth, second. Henry, you have any comment?
No, I don't.
Okay, so we got to open public comment up? Any public comment, Marnie?
Yes, we have Van Cadenhead.
Okay.
Van Cadenhead and I will be brief. I completely support what Mr. Gregg just said about this property. I'm very happy to see that it's going to be in perpetuity conservation, and I think that the, the Glyns ought to be able to name it whatever they want to name it to, to make this happen. And I've, I was on the LPA when this was first discussed, and I'm just so happy that all these underwater platted lots are now going to be under the aegis of the village without any kind of density removing from the, those, all those hundred and fifty lots which are there, because that was, that was just an airheaded idea. But I'm so happy that, that this will be in perpetuity conservation, and I would urge us to have members of the staff try to get Florida Forever to pay for part of it, or, or have Florida Commerce pay for the whole thing and get the, you know, the coral lot and, and have it reimbursed. And there's the extra added attraction, the one point eight building permits that are available up by the highway, I think that will help to ease the problem that we're going to have with taking suits. So all in all, rock on, I think it's a great thing, and I hope you all vote, I'm sure you will, five oh, to bring this property into the village fold. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Van. Anybody else, Marnie?
No, sir.
All right, public comment is now closed. I think it's a great thing, I remember a couple of months ago talking to Barbara Powell, and we were talking about green space in the Keys, and she said, you know, Alamoata is kind of the most rural city in the Florida Keys, other than nine oh five with all the land the state owns and the Fed's own up there. But, you know, that's a, that's a big plus for us that'll never be built on, and, you know, there's a lot of mangroves in there, a lot of salt marsh, so it's just, I'm pretty excited myself for the, for the Glynn family. So, all right, Marnie, with that being said, there's no other discussion, would you call the roll, please?
Hey, Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pender?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
I have one follow-up, I just need to confirm the, the revenue source to be utilized to pay for the property. It would become an asset of the village, therefore, one use, one revenue source we could use is the discretionary sales surtax that is accounted for in the capital project fund. Land acquisition is, you know, that, that tax is established by referendum, and land acquisition is one of the uses, eligible uses. So just want to confirm that you're okay with using those funds.
Yes, ma'am.
From that fund, okay.
John, do we need to wait for Elizabeth to come back, or we all just, we're okay? I mean, she made the motion, I mean, she seconded, so.
Yeah, you already voted on approving it, it's just giving direction to Maria as to which funds you would like her to use.
All right, so I think there's four of us right here that are okay with it.
Yes.
So, and we'll ask Elizabeth when she comes back, just to make sure, okay? So, John, I guess we can move on, tab twenty-four.
Yep, we're in the ordinance sections. This is an ordinance on first reading. It's an ordinance of Alamoata, Village of Islands, Florida, amending chapter sixty-six, Waterways, Article One in general, Section sixty-six dash two, operation of vessels in restricted areas of the village code to modify the vessel exclusion zone slash swim area, generally located off Port Antigua and White Marlin Beach on Lower Matacumbi Key, as further described in Exhibit A, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, Peter.
Okay, good evening, counsel. As I'm sure you are aware, the council did adopt an ordinance that was back in February, or August two thousand and twenty, to establish, create this vessel exclusion slash swim zone off of Port Antigua, White Marlin Beaches. It generally extends out three hundred feet from the mean high water line. Notice, though, in the bottom left-hand corner, is that something I'm doing, Frank, or? It's okay, we can, we can live with this square. So in the bottom left-hand corner of the map here, this, this map that you're looking at now, this is the current map associated with the ordinance, this is the original one and, and the one currently within the ordinance. Notice that area in the bottom left of the map there, that's an excluded area of the swim zone, we purposely left that out of the swim zone, and the reason for that is that there are four private properties there that have docks. So to allow those private property owners access to the docks by their boats, we left that zone out originally. One result of that was a concentration of the, the recreational boaters into that area, especially on the north side where the water is shallower. As you can imagine, it caused significant disruption to the residents there. So those residents, we have been discussing this issue with those residents for over a year, myself, the village managers, John, to try and come up with a, a solution to this, which we think we have, so I'm going to change slides here. Try to change slides. Sorry, pressing it, promise. Okay, there we go, oh, God. Okay, here we go. So, the solution to this is to amend the current map associated with the ordinance, essentially reducing the size of that excluded area, or, you know, creating a larger swim zone, shrinking that down to call that a- uh, shrinking that down to call that a narrow channel. So that's essentially a channel, about a 25-foot wide channel, closes that area down, but also allows those private property owners access to their docks, uh, with their boats. We have been discussing this with all of those private property owners. They are all in support of this. I think you all have heard from some of them as well. I've discussed this with Captain Paul and his, his water officers, Nelson and Marty. They're both aware of this and support it. We think it can help. Uh, this does require the installation of five new buoys to create this channel. Uh, we have, uh, received all of the permits in order to do that. Those council, as you, as you may recall, approved, uh, an agreement with a contractor to install those buoys. So we are, staff are recommending that the council adopt this ordinance on first reading.
Okay, all right, thank you, Peter.
Sure.
Counsel, any questions for Peter?
Peter, just one quick question. Does that cha-, wouldn't that channel prohibit anchoring in the channel so that no one would, um, obstruct it for navigation purposes?
It's a good question. So, no. I mean, there is no, no law or regulation that says you couldn't anchor in that channel technically because it's not a navigable, navigable waterway. Um, but from what I've been told from the residents and law enforcement is that likely people are not going to anchor there because it's, it's deep. Right? That's a deep water channel. It's not one of the shallow areas where people are going to get out, jump in the water, so.
Okay.
I mean, if somebody was anchored there, I don't, we couldn't tell them to leave just because it's not a, yeah, it's not a uniformed, you know, marking system. So, I hope that helps.
I always thought it was a, a problem to anchor in the middle of a channel, although I've seen people in Snake Creek and Tavernier Creek fishing, but.
Well, that, that is, you know, that would be prohibited, but this-
I thought it was.
Is not a chan-, we, I called it a channel, but it's not a true navigable channel.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll talk about later, that later, if necessary. Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, all right, uh, so while we're waiting for Henry to come back, uh, Marnie, you have any public comment?
Let me double-check soon. No, we don't.
Okay, uh, so public comment is now closed. Uh, okay, anybody else have anything?
Yeah, it's long overdue.
All right.
Good.
Can we confirm that Elizabeth is okay with using the?
Are you, you're okay? Okay, all right, good. Okay, do, uh, we want to wait for Henry to come back? Or does somebody want to make a, if we have no further discussion, somebody can make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Now, you're a second? All right, got a motion in a second? Uh, let's see, can we? There's Henry right now.
Henry's the last to vote.
Yeah.
We can go slow.
Okay. So, Henry, we are on the White Marlin Beach thing, amendment, and, um, we have a motion and a second to approve, so we were waiting on you. So, Marnie, could you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
That motion passes five to zero.
All righty, we are on to, uh, tab 25, John?
Tab 25 is an ordinance on second reading. Uh, it's an ordinance of Alamorata Village of Islands, Florida, amending Chapter 50, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Article 1 in general, creating Section 50-2 to be entitled Trespass warnings, Authorization to Issue Trespass Warning for Public Property, and Appeal Process of the Village Code relating to trespass on public property within the village, Providing for Severability, Providing for Inclusion in the Code, and Providing for an Effective Date. Um, this came before council, I think it was a couple of months ago. Uh, it was approved on a four-to-one vote. Uh, it was, it, it was brought forward on a request by the sheriff's office to allow for, um, the proper, um, issuance of trespass warnings and, and the required appeal process under Florida law for that. Uh, this would do that. Um, it does the, the, um, if I recall correctly, the one, uh, question or point of contention at the last, uh, council meeting was that there is a provision in there that does allow for the manager or designee to issue trespass warnings. Um, as Captain Paul had described, I believe, at the last, uh, meeting. That is something that, you know, the, the sheriff's office can't always be there at all times. So, um, you know, if somebody is trespassing and the sheriff's office isn't able to get there, uh, in, in time or as quickly, it would allow for somebody, um, you know, here at Founder's Park or anywhere else to i-, i-, issue the trespass warning and to allow that process to get going forward. Uh, so I'll turn it over to Captain Paul if he'd like to, um, fill in anything I missed.
Kind of clarify that a little bit more. The, um, this is not something we'd ever ask a village staff member to do, is trespass warn somebody. What it does do is it, my staff members would not trespass some, warn somebody on a long-term basis. What this is, is for a village staff member to be able to tell us, we want them trespass warned for a long-term basis for us to issue that. Because I would never, my, my guys can never issue that trespass warning without, like, for instance, we had an issue at the post office recently, and they didn't want to trespass warn the individual who kept coming back. We can't do that. So it has to be somebody who is a spokesperson for the, the village in this case. So, uh, that's kind of how that clarifies. So that's, I think, why the language is in there. It gives the, the village manager or designee the right to issue that trespass warning. We would actually be doing the issuing because the way the ordinance is anyway, we have to issue that notice to, um, appeal. So, and we documented in our system as a trespass warning. So if it's violated after that point, we have the documentation for court and everything already there, who issued it, and it goes on body camera and the whole nine yards, so there's no, no questions of, of, uh, you know. Plus, it, we would never have, ask a staff member to put themselves in horror's way, so.
Okay, any questions for Derek, counsel? Captain Paul? All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, Captain. Counsel, any questions? If not, I'm going to open public comment, any discussion. All right, Marnie, public comment?
I don't have anyone signed up.
Okay, with that being said, public comments closed. Counsel?
Move for approval?
Now, you're a second?
Second.
All right, Marnie, please call the roll.
Okay, that was Councilman Greg who, my motion? Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
That motion passes five to zero.
All right, tab 26, Mr. Quick?
Yep, tab 26 is, um, it's, is an ordinance on first reading that's being brought back, um, as a result of a motion for reconsideration at the last council meeting. Um, the title is, um, uh, I'll read the title and then I'll explain, um, the, the status of where we are. An ordinance of Alamorata Village of Islands, Florida, calling for a referendum vote to be held with the presidential preference primary election on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024, providing for submission to the electors of proposed amendments to the village charter pertaining to term limits, providing for placement on the ballot, providing for requisite ballot language, providing for notice of election, providing for authorization of village clerk and for village client, uh, and for village canvassing board, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the charter slash conformity of amendment, and providing for an effective date. Um, this was originally passed, this was originally presented with the, um, election date of March 19th, 2024, which was in the title that I just read. It was passed at the November meeting with the amendment that, um, it, uh, it be placed on the November ballot. Um, uh, after that, a motion for reconsideration, uh, was made. Uh, that motion passed by a three-to-two vote. What that does is it, it, it stops everything, and we are, we are in reconsideration. We are now back at first reading on this, uh, ordinance. So, um, that's why I read the title to include March, not November, because we have been brought back. However, the date of March 19th, 2024 is not a viable date, uh, any longer. Uh, the deadline to get in, um, uh, to get this on the, uh, the ballot for the March election is next week. Uh, this is obviously, it's an ordinance. It has to be heard on two readings. So, uh, there is no way that we could, uh, meet the advertising requirements for a second reading for this, um, uh, to be heard and then, uh, get over to the supervisor of elections office in time for the March ballot. Um, so even though I read that, uh, date in the title, I do want to make sure everyone is aware that that is not viable, uh, for that. Um, the supervisor of elections does have to consent to the placement of this on the ballot. Uh, she is willing to put it on the November ballot. I have spoken with her, uh, so that remains a, a viable date.
What date is that, John? November 7?
Uh, yeah, November 5th, 2024.
Okay. Okay, counsel, uh, any discussion? No?
Yes.
Okay.
And speaking to the supervisor of elections, there is an August date that could be assumed. There is an August date for an election?
There is. She had told me when I spoke with her, admittedly, it was about, um, two months ago when I first talked, spoke with her about what the viable dates were. This was before it was presented. Um, she had indicated she did not want to put it on the August ballot. Um, uh, so at least based on the information I have, uh, that is not a, a date she is willing to put it on. Um, uh, if, if, if there's updated information that she is willing to, then obviously that would be a date that, that could be viable.
The information I received was, it has to be in by June the 6th.
Yes, that's, I don't have the date specifically in front of me, but I, that sounds right. Correct? It is sometime in June, yes.
No, it's in by June the 6th. It could be on the August, uh, election.
So long as the supervisor of, uh, elections agrees to put it on the, the August date, yes.
Yes, but she told me June the 6th. That's all, which, that would qualify for the amendment.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if, uh, if that is the, if the, the council, uh, would like for, the majority council would like for you on that date, I would just, uh, say that I would need to speak with her, and obviously when we come back for second reading, I could confirm with you all if, if that is viable, that, meaning the supervisor of elections is willing to put it on that date. Uh, if not, then the, the date would have to be the November election.
Do we want to continue, or we want to have public comment first?
Whatever you want to do.
Uh, let's open public comment, Marnie, as if there's any public want to speak.
Yes, I have Van Cadenhead signed up for this.
I'm sorry that we have to, I'm Van Cadenhead, by the way. Um, I'm sorry that we have to go over this again. And, uh, I do not agree with, uh, Mr. Greg's estimation of this, uh, uh, question to be bullshit. I do not think it is. I think it's perfectly normal to think that eight years, uh, on the dais is more than enough service that you would give your village, and I appreciate anybody who gives it eight years. But, uh, anything other than that is, uh, uh, something that, I don't think we should revisit this at all. It's been voted on four-to-one, and now Mr. Greg wants to reconsider it so that he can run in the next election. Well, you know, he ran once, uh, when the village first started, and he's run again and gotten re-elected. And, uh, I think he's more than served the community well, uh, for, for his, uh, causes, uh, for a sufficient amount of time. And I think it should be for everyone that sits up there should be happy to, uh, have an eight-year limit. You know, you can have it two years, two years, two years, and two years. If you want to get elected four times, that means the people like you, the people want you. That you've done, you've done well to be there for eight years. Now, for, for it to be some, something other than that, I don't think it serves the, the, for the same reason that you want to change your auditors. You know, you want to have a, a different person in the seat doing the job with a different set of eyes. And, um, I applaud all the good work that Mr. Greg has done in the time he's been here. But I think he's wrong in this, and I don't think it's bullshit. I think it's a very good idea that you should vote now, tonight, on the first reading to, uh, reestablish the fact that the people of Alamorata are best served by eight years of service, period. Thank you very much.
Marnie, anybody else?
No, sir, that's it.
Public comment is now closed. Vice Mayor Mahoney?
Um, uh, sorry, my voice still. Um, in the beginning, when this all started, I really had no clue that it was going to affect certain people. And I know you're extremely upset about it. I do believe that there should be term limits, I just do, um, but I think it should be left up to the public. And I think if you move this to August, it is clearly targeting, and I don't like that at all. I say we put it on the November ballot, let the people in this town, if they want, and again, Mark, I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was you when this came up, but if people want to see you run again, then they're going to vote this down. But I do believe it's something the public should decide because it affects them. I don't want it in August because it does look like you're being targeted, and I don't think that's fair. So, it's my feelings.
Not only that, but the primary is after the qualifying period, if, if you think about it. I don't, Marnie, do you know the qualifying period right off the top of your head?
I believe it is August 6th through the 13th.
Okay, okay, so there you go. And the primary's not until after that, so if somebody's already qualified that, in August, to run for village council for, in the November election, how can you tell them this wouldn't take place till after the, the, the primary? I mean, uh, I'm, so, I mean, after they've already qualified. So it doesn't, it, it's contradicting itself, uh, from what I see. So this wouldn't take effect until the next two years is when it would take effect. And John, that, it would be retroactive, right? If somebody's did two years, eight years ago, and they did two years, you know, or, and six more years, you know, consecutive, then that would be eight years.
Yeah, as drafted, it's, it's retroactive, and it's eight cumulative years, not consecutive under this.
All right, so far as I'm concerned, uh, there's no question, it's, it's, it's got to be on the November 5th election because you can't, you, you, then you gotta, you gotta stop somebody from qualifying. We can't do that. How can you stop somebody if the qualification period is the 6th through the 13th? Okay, and the primary's not until later. So, anyways, I just thought I'd point that out. Counsel, any other questions?
Well, I, I definitely just want to apologize for any personal, like, um, attacks. I, it was not intention, intended, and, and I hope you can accept that apology, Mark. I know we had-
I, I accept.
Thank you.
I would like to respond to a couple of things that Van said. So, so first of all, um, uh, I, I know I can be arrogant, but I'm not so arrogant to think that this is all about me. There's more people than me, uh, that would be, uh, subject to this. Uh, the two I can think of would be Deb Gillis and Jim Mooney. Uh, but I, I'm a big boy. I, I don't care anymore. I'm, I'm fine if you guys want to do this. But I, what I, what I want the public to understand is what the downside to this is. Uh, I think it's bad medicine. It does some good, but it does more harm. And so, in my particular case, when I was elected the first time, uh, it might seem hard to believe, but I was 40 years old. I had a lot more hair, uh, less wrinkles, and 20 pounds lighter. But I wasn't nearly as smart then as I am now, assuming you would agree that I'm smart. Uh, you may, that's debatable to some. But what I'm saying is the experience that I've gained since then, and I took off 16 years between the end of my last term and then when I ran in 2020. And I learned a lot in that time. I served on the LPA in that time. And I just think that there may be others who come after me, and there may be others who are, who are qualified now to, or, who, who would be affected by the new ordinance now, that could come back, and they would offer something to the village. And so Van said that he thinks eight years is enough. Uh, that, but what I would ask the public to consider is that the person who has the most experience and dedication and, and, um, uh, education, I said, just, just experience in doing this and knowing about this is the best qualified person, and they should not be artificially handicapped, or I would say penalized by the length of their service, in the same way I mentioned about the auditing firm earlier. So there, there is a downside to this, and it's not about me. I mean, it was before, and, and I would say I was very upset, and I, uh, I believe what Elizabeth said. I, I know, I know she's telling you the truth, and I know, uh, Sharon didn't know that. I did use the foul language that, um, that Van mentioned earlier. I won't use it again, and I apologize to those of you who heard that. That was, uh, very inappropriate, and first time in my public service career I ever lost my temper. The word that he used? Bovine excrement, but- Bovine excrement, but nevertheless, don't let that silliness distract from this. I think any, and this has an impact on those who might want to serve in the future. I do this not for the money, obviously, but because I love it and I love my community, and I love the, the environment here, and I want a place for my grandkids to enjoy and others who come behind me. And I just feel a bit, a bit affronted, a bit, a bit hurt by not being able to have that option in the future. You know, I, I'm still young enough where I might survive a few more years and take off some time, and then someone may call me back and say, you know, Mark, you were here in the early days, you know, maybe you could contribute something. And there's a lot of value to having depth of the bench, as they say in baseball, where you have some folks who are around. Like Maria is one, sitting right across from me. She's been here, she wasn't here when I served the first time, but she has lots more experience and recent knowledge that we've called upon her many, many times, and she's saved our, you know, what's because of that. And so I think there is value in that if, if, if you want to, you know, I think another option would be to, to eliminate the retroactive effect of this. That would at least give some of us, you know, you guys might want to stick around and do this for a while. I'm suggesting it's not a bad idea. You know, you may sit out for a couple of terms and then want to come back. You're young enough, you could do it. So consider that. That's my speech. Vote as you may. Thank you for listening.
Well, I'll, I'll say one more thing, and I'll be quiet. The mosquito control never had any term limits. And then in 2016, I believe, when that election happened, there's, they're four-year terms. Okay, and they did implement, now you serve three, four-year terms, and you can't wait four years and come back again. In other words, so, but you do 12 years, so you, you.
So anyways, I'm just, I, I, this came to mind as you were talking, Mark.
Well, you know, if the public doesn't want you, all they have to do is wait two years and you're gone, so this, it was different when there were four-year terms, but I, I said I was done, but now I'm really done, so thank you.
All right, so anyways, I just thought I'd throw that out there. I don't, does the county have any? Is it termed out? Are they four? Or three?
Stay as long as you want, as far as I know.
Yeah, I can't remember. I know state rep can do, it's eight years. It's four. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Anyways, I just threw that out there, but I understand, Mark, where you're coming from. You know, some of the younger people might want to, you know, do some work. You want, you got anything you want to say, Elizabeth?
Yeah, yeah, I'm on the mic. Okay, good, okay.
Can't hear you.
Okay, you can't hear me?
No. Sharon? I didn't hear what you said.
She was asking.
I was asking.
I was sitting back. I was on the mic, yeah. Yeah, okay. Anybody else? Ready to go?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I mean, I am happy to have a conversation about the retroactive component. I, it's totally up to anyone here.
Okay, I would like to make a comment. When I prefaced my comments were about to come, mainly had to do, not with the term limits, if you want to go back to two-year terms or whatever, but the most important facet of this is consider eight years, and it would involve two people that I know for sure. That's Mark and Deb Gillis. A proper vote for the public to make a choice, I'm not in favor of. I'm not in favor concurrent terms. Originally, I voted with two other people. It carried three to two. But you know, if I go along with that, I'm going along with the dissension that we're facing in this community and this panel. I'm contributing to that. If I have to say I'm contributing in a way that I was accused by somebody, and certainly under proper circumstances, I get even with her. I get even with him. That is not pulling us together as a body. So having said that, I'm not in favor of concurrent times that people spent. I don't care if they're here for 150 years. It doesn't make any difference to me. The public will make that choice. But I'm certainly not in favor of the term limits being concurrent. So my, my opening remarks did not reflect that, and I know that, but I said them for a reason. So that's where I am. If you want to go for the eight years and let the public vote on that, so be it. I'm not too sure I'm in favor of that either, but if the majority wants to put it in the public's hands, that's okay. But I'm certainly not in favor of concurrent time you served.
Oh, okay. I was confused.
You're saying the retroactive is what you're saying.
Right, yes. So I'm not in favor of that.
You're just saying eight years. You're not even in favor of that, but you'd let the public.
Yeah, let the public vote on that, but not concurrent. I'm not in favor.
Yeah, the retroactive, yeah.
It's not fair to Mark. It's not fair to Deb Gillis.
It's not concurrent, it's consecutive.
Consecutive, yes.
No, it's retroactive.
It's retroactive that he's talking about.
Whatever term you want to use, I'm not in favor.
So you don't want retroactive, right?
No, I don't.
And I commend you for being the bigger person and changing your mind and trying to pull everybody together. That's a very wonderful thing you just did, Henry, so I commend you on that.
I do too, yeah.
So having said that.
So, so do I hear a motion now that's not, that's gonna not include the retroactive?
Just say the motion. Say the motion. The motion, I, so we, oh, God.
I would move to approve with the word retroactive stricken.
Okay, you want to make a?
You did. I'll second it. I'll second it.
I'll second it first.
No, I already did.
And on the November ballot, I assume.
On the November ballot. Yeah, eight years, right? That's where we're at. Eight years for the public to decide.
Eight cumulative years, so, so basically this would be striking the term eight consecutive years in office.
No, we have to take the word retroactive.
Yeah, the retroactive is taken out, but.
You shouldn't use such big words on us.
Right now, the charter says shall not, shall serve no more than eight consecutive years in office. If you just want it to stay eight consecutive years, we don't even need to make a change.
It, it's eight years.
Yeah, so, my, what I'm saying is it's striking the word consecutive.
And retroactive. Both words.
I see, but my confusion. We're striking the word retroactive from the ordinance. The word consecutive is being proposed to be removed from the charter.
Yes, right.
So that's, that's striking, this is very confusing. I'm sorry. I understand what you're saying, yes. I understand.
Does everybody?
So it's going to be eight cumulative years.
Yes.
Not retroactive.
Not retroactive and not consecutive?
It's.
Cumulative. Eight cumulative years.
Eight cumulative years, but not retroactive, so it would be, if it passes, it would be from. It actually would have eight more because it would be from when, when the, whenever it passes.
You'd have it from 2020, Mark. You'd have eight years.
This actually isn't about Mark.
Well, I'm saying, what I'm, I'm using Mark as an example.
Someone like me.
Someone like you, yeah. So let's just.
So what I'm saying, let's just use you as the example here, that if it was 2020, then you'd have eight years, so you could only go through 28.
John, is that correct?
Is that correct?
I don't think it is. I think that the eight years starts counting when it passes, but I will double check the. I think it starts counting when it passes, so you would have eight years. I will double check between now and second reading to confirm.
Yeah, it starts, yeah.
Yeah, it starts when it's passed. It's not, it's not retroactive.
Okay.
It's prospective.
Prospective, exactly.
Oh, my God, that word is way too big for this word.
Okay, now, so everybody understands, so he, you made the motion, Elizabeth seconded it. John, you got the, you got it down, right?
Yes, got it.
Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolins. Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder.
Yes.
That motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, each of you. Thank you.
Elizabeth, I just want to make sure that motion was right because we were talking about a lot of things.
A lot of big words. We were using a lot of big words. I know.
All right, so we are moving now on to?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
This is an ordinance, File Amara Village Violence Florida, providing for an increase in compensation for village council members, providing for referendum to be held with the regular village election on November 5th, 2024, providing for submission to the electors of a proposed amendment to the village charter pertaining, pertaining to increased compensation for council members, providing for requisite ballot language, providing for separability, providing for inclusion in the charter slash conformity of amendment, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, and providing for an effective date. This is back before you all, if you remember, there was a, an ordinance that was approved by a three to two vote to increase it to $2,000. Your charter requires that, an increase in compensation in order to put it before the electors has to be, requires four affirmative votes from the council. So it's being brought back to you all on a lower amount at the request of council at $1,500. And this one would be required to be on the November ballot. This was, this, under your restrict, your requirements, this is not eligible for the, for any other ballot other than the November one, and I'm trying to pull up that provision now, but that's.
Okay. Okay, do we have any comment?
I just have a question of, John, if we wanted to, could we add a provision in there that, I'm not quite sure how to phrase it, but where the council would be entitled to a cost of living adjustment in line with whatever the staff would get?
Yeah, I mean, that could certainly be added and presented to the village, yes.
I, I would do that. Yeah, I'd go with that.
I have a question.
Wait a minute, I have a question, and probably for Maria. Okay, why not, because, you know, this came up before. Maria had talked to me about this before, that they go back to when they started at $1,000, and I don't know that this would have to go to, to referendum for the people to vote, the residents, but if, why shouldn't the council be able to get cost of living raises retroactive from when it started, the $1,000? Maria, does that make any sense? You want to explain it? You talked to me about this last year, but.
Your charter.
The charter prohibits that.
I think what I was trying to do was say that if the compensation went up to 2,000 or whatever amount, I had looked at the CPI increases over time. And so if you just considered the CPI increases, there, there, some increase to council is warranted because there, there's a cost of living increase. So when people say, when I was serving, I was making $1,000, well, that was 10, 15 years ago. That $1,000 isn't the same $1,000 as it is today. So my point was just one way to argue the increase. Is that there have been CPI, you know, cost of living increases that the council should.
Okay.
So that was all that was, but it's not really in our charter.
What Councilmember Gregg is proposing is to include in this a, an automatic cost of living adjustment as well as the increase.
Okay, and that, that's going to the public for a referendum, right?
Well, if four, four fifths of you agree to that, yes.
Okay, okay, all right. We couldn't do the cost of living adjustment by ordinance or resolution, though, could?
No, because the charter specifies a specific amount.
Yep, we're. Okay, I, I see what you're saying. Right, can't, can't go outside the charter. Okay, all right.
I have a comment. You know, this, this, this kind of, there was just some, this conversation caused some strange, I don't know, I got some strange vibes around asking for an increase. You know, is there a provision that needs to be included that, that says you don't have to accept it? You have the option as a council person not to accept the, the fee. Does that help anybody with this idea that we're asking for an increase so that we can broaden the field of people who, you know, could do this as a part-time job? Does it, does it help, you know, and maybe we have someone who doesn't feel the need to, you know, take the money?
Well, we always have the option to decline compensation, don't we?
Yeah, I mean, I think what, what you could do is you could, I'd have to work with the language, but it could be drafted in a way that allows for the council, to give the council the authority to make a cost of living adjustment, and then that way each year it's presented to you to make your own cost of living adjustment.
No, it actually, I, I think, I think, no, what I was saying is.
Oh, that any member can, oh, yeah, any member can decline their pay.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I mean, that, I don't know, I mean, is it necessary to include that in some language so that you have the choice? You can check the box. Because does that make anyone feel better about talking about increasing the pay?
I already feel better about it, but if you think that might make the voters feel better about it.
You mean, you feel better about increasing the pay?
Sure.
Oh, I thought that people were not happy with that.
Well, they weren't at 2,000.
Take 2,000.
But you've lowered it down, so that, that might sell better.
I'm still actually thinking.
I lowered it down.
All right, but anyway, if it does, if it's neither here nor there, then I just, never mind.
So, did, did you already make a motion?
I have not.
We need to have public comment, right? Marnie, any public comment?
Yes, Van Cadenhead.
Well, I'm Van Cadenhead. I spoke in favor of $1,500 because I figured you all needed a raise from 1,000, which we started off at 300. And I think it would be patently unfair to all the preceding council people that they were never given the opportunity for a cost of living increase. And essentially, this $500 is a cost of living increase in the charter. If you're going to put it in the charter with a four-fifths vote, I'm in favor of that. I'm not in favor of, of allowing subsequent councils to make up their own rules about if they think a, a cost of living increases do them. Well, let them put it on the ballot. And go for the 2,000 or go for the 1,750 or, or whatever they think is, they can support. But it's obviously been needed for, for you to be compensated as a stipend for your service. And hopefully you're not there to count on that as your paycheck, and I don't think any of you are. And I applaud you that you've been working for $1,000 a month, but, I mean, that's $12,000 a year. And there's a lot of people in, in town that work here for less than $12,000 a year, and they work full-time. So I, I'd appreciate, I appreciate all your, your efforts, and I'm staunchly behind giving you a raise to $1,500. I think that's fair. I think it's in a large part overdue. But I am not in favor of opening up the back door to the charter by allowing you to decide that you need a cost of living increase in a year or two years or after the next election or whatever. If, if it goes into the charter at $1,500 with a four-fifths vote, I'm all for it. Other than that, I, I think you ought to fall back and think about it a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Van. Marnie, any other public comment?
Nope, that's it.
So, Mark, what did you propose to John?
Just suggesting if we could include some additional language with the approval of the council that, that the village council would be entitled to receive whatever cost of living adjustment that the staff would also receive, if any, on an annual adjustment basis. And I don't know if that's a COLA adjustment or a CPI. I, I'm not sure of the difference between the two. But something that is a independent standard where we wouldn't just say, oh, well, we need 100% cost of living adjustment. People would be angry at us for that.
Are you asking for that to go on the referendum?
If, if we're going to make the adjustment, it has to. I mean, if you want to include it, it has to.
It has to go on there. Well, yeah, I mean, really.
There's no other way to do it.
Are we all in agreement?
I am.
We got to vote on this anyways.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agree, I mean, you know, I appreciate the volunteer nature of many things that I know we all spend our time doing. But this is kind of a intense volunteer effort.
So if there's no further discussion, do I hear a motion?
I, I would move to approve. I, I would move to approve the $1,500 increase, or increase to $1,500, together with a cost of living adjustment with a identifiable standard CPI or COLA or whatever John says is the best.
And you said commensurate with what staff receives?
Yes.
That's tied to.
I'll second it.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
Okay.
We're on to 28 now.
Twenty-eight, yeah.
Which is an ordinance of Alamoada Village Violence, Florida, amending Chapter 30 Land Development Regulations, Article 4 Administrative Procedures, Division 10 Plating, Section 30-431 of the Village Code, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing for an effective date. This is an ordinance on first reading. This is an item that planning has been seeing some issues coming forward where individuals have been improperly modifying their lot lines, whether splitting lots or selling off or acquiring portions of their neighbors' lots to be added to others. And the property appraiser has been recognizing that on, as part of their, their process. But unfortunately, the process requires approval by the village in order to do that. What this is looking to do is really just put it crystal clear as day in the, in the code that the county property appraiser cannot record any lot line adjustments that have not been approved by the, by the village. Again, it's, it, it has to go through, but this is just to make it crystal clear in the code.
Okay. So Jennifer, can I ask you a question about this? Let's say somebody has two lots. They've combined them, but they, I think you have to have a minimum of 4,500 square feet to get a permit, right? So if somebody decides they want to, and I know this has been done before, that they come back, they have 5,000 square feet, and they want to separate the lots. So can that, would this prohibit that?
Well, we wouldn't allow that to happen. We wouldn't allow someone to subdivide a lot to make it non-conforming.
So if they had a lot and say they wanted to get a permit for a mother-in-law suite?
But if you have a 5,000 square foot lot and you want to subdivide it, it's going to be under the buildable area?
No, no, no. I'm saying 5,000 square feet after.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I thought you said the whole lot was.
Let's say the two lots are 20,000 square feet.
Oh, sure.
And they've, they've built on 15,000 of it.
Sure.
All righty. So they have another 5,000 square feet. Would this prevent them from applying?
All the, all this does is it requires somebody to come to the planning department and apply for a lot line adjustment or a plating or unity of title or any one of those permits, development permits, prior to going to the property appraiser and getting a new address and a new real estate ID number, which is what people are doing now. Now, I can't speak to specific instances because obviously, you know, when people apply, we look at zoning districts and the lots, because some of our zoning districts do not allow you to subdivide any, any additional buildable lots. So, you know, specifically R1 and R1M, you cannot subdivide that any addition, to any additional buildable lots. So, you know, we wouldn't allow that, but, so it's a case-by-case basis. But all this does is require somebody to come before the planning department and apply for those permits first, which they're supposed to do anyway, and it is in our code, but this spells it out very clear for them. And we intend to notify the property appraiser of this new ordinance if and when it gets passed.
I, I thought they had to come in because you have to get a, they have to get a water meter. They have to get the address. They have to get, yeah.
Yeah, they're supposed to, but for some reason lately, we're finding a lot of people, not re, not so much recently, but more, you know, in the last, you know, 15 years or so, that this may have happened. You know, particularly like family properties, like that have like kind of broken it up for like, you know, family members, and now they want to sell it off or they want to redevelop. And, you know, we can't allow that now because it wasn't properly plotted.
I would say, I don't think this actually adds any additional requirements or restrictions on our residents. I think they have to do this anyway. It just, we have been finding, this is numerous instances where they didn't. So, you know, Jennifer, Jennifer and I got together and we just said, listen, let's just make it clear as day in the code. And it's, it's right there. So I, but I don't think this adds any additional hurdles or requirements for them.
Yeah. The problem is the property appraiser is making these changes and the village doesn't know about it. They're not telling these property owners, you need to go to the village first. And then they're making these changes. So one way, one thing it has affected is made it sometimes difficult with regard to the wastewater assessments or wastewater system development charges that need to be levied on properties where maybe it's split and there was no, you know, the, there might have been one EDU at the time. Now it would be two. And we don't know what happened here. Why didn't, you know, a wastewater system development charge get levied? So that's just.
So Buddy, I think, if I could interrupt, what I think you were referring to before was when somebody already had two lots. And in that, in that case, they would just do a lot line adjustment. They would move the boundary between them. This is a totally different thing. If I, this is a lot.
Make sure, that's all.
Yeah, yeah. This is a lot split, where if you have, for example, a 50-foot wide lot, and it's between you and your neighbor, and you want to cut it in half, and your neighbor wants half, and you want half, then you turn it into two 25-foot wide lots. And then you're probably not going to be able. You, you're going to destroy your development rights. And so all this is doing is it's saying, well, it already says, and there's a disclaimer in here, which I did this when I was a lawyer. You have to put this in the deed before you record it. What the new language is saying is you have to get approval from the village to do that before you go down to the property appraiser's office and screw everything up. So it's, it's kind of protecting the public, in my personal opinion. But, you know, the property appraiser is an independent constitutional officer of the county, and they don't have to do, they don't have to follow our code. So you can just go in there and you can cut your property into one foot squares if you want to, but you do so at your own peril. So.
I got you. I got you. Okay, council, any other questions? Sorry, I had to ask that question, but I.
Oh, we all learned from.
That is good.
No, I mean, I, you know, I just, all right. So with that being said, public comment? Any public comment, Marnie?
Let me double-check on Zoom, but I don't believe so. No, sir.
Okay. With that being said, public comments now closed.
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Marnie, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
Twenty-nine, John?
Twenty-nine is also an ordinance on first reading. It's an ordinance of Alamoada Village Violence, Florida, amending Chapter 30 Land Development Regulations, Article 4 Administrative Procedures, Division 2 Development Review Process, Section 30-212 of the Village Code, to create a zoning in progress provision, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing for an effective date. This goes back to the discussion when we were originally considering the moratorium. There was some discussion and some inquiry about a, what's called a zoning in progress provision, which basically what that does is if you pass an ordinance on first reading, it would require anybody who is coming in for a development application would need to comply with the, both the old and the new requirement. If it's, if, and it gets triggered if it's an amendment to Chapter 30, a text amendment to Chapter 30, which is your land development regulations, or the rezoning of a parcel. So this would kick in and would say, listen, we're in this process. While we're in this process, you are going to have to comply with these new regulations as well. And that would last for a period of six months. Or obviously, once the new regulations are in place, if it's shorter than six months, then the zoning in progress would go away, assuming we passed a, the, the second reading was dealt with short of that time. It also allows for the council by resolution to extend that time period up to three months, just to give some additional flexibility, depending on how long it takes for the Department of Commerce sometimes to get back to us on some of these, some of these proposed changes. There was a suggestion that I received earlier today from one of the council members that I want to bring up, which was to just to change the order of, of one of the, of the language of the admittedly long first sentence, which talks about, it's really, let's see, one, two, three. It's the fifth line of the proposed edit, which going from the word unless down to two lines after and ending with the word legislation, to moving that to the end of that sentence. So it would read, it's on page six of the proposed, or the, the draft ordinance. So it would read, and I won't read the entirety of the beginning, but it'll say, no development application pending before the village with respect to the area or text, which is the subject of the proposed amendment, shall be approved for a period of six months from the date of the approval on first reading by the village council. And then you get, you move the other down, unless the development application would be in conformity with both existing and proposed legislation. So there was that suggestion that was made. So I'm presenting that so that you all can consider that as well. I, from my perspective, I'm fine with that change. I don't, I don't think it, I think it grammatically probably helps, and it doesn't alter the, the effect of the, the actual language.
John, isn't the practical effect of this, if we passed it, it would, in essence, move up the date that someone could come in and file an application and kind of, you know, the, the last minute within which they could do that. In other words, the way it sits now is, is the law hasn't changed, even though we've had a second reading, until the Department of Commerce gives their blessing to that. And then it becomes effective. And this moves up that effective date. Is that a correct way to look at it?
That's correct. So if you pass the change on first reading, and then it goes to the Department of Commerce, and say there's three or four months in between whenever first reading and second reading occurs because of that time as well as advertising, now, somebody could come in during that time period under the old requirements, even if it was, you know, two days before the, the second reading. Now, like you said, this moves it forward, and it, and so the zoning in progress would kick in from the date it's passed on first reading.
Thank you. So if we got something hot we're dealing with, we want to speed up the effect of the law, and this would do that.
Yeah, it would close the gap on that, yeah.
Counsel, any other discussion on this? Do we, does everybody understand this? Okay. Henry?
No comment.
No comment? Okay. All right.
I move to approve.
We got public comment?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we got to do public comment first. Okay. Marnie, you have any public comment on this?
No, sir, we don't.
Okay.
Just one point of clarification for any motion, if you could specify whether it includes the modification of the, moving that language that I mentioned before.
I move to approve with the language modification.
I'll second with the language modification.
And public comment is now closed. All right. So we have a motion and we have a second. Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
Tap 30.
Thirty is, we're in the motions. It's a motion to adopt the proposed 2024 meeting calendar and rescind the 2024 land use meeting calendar that was previously approved on October 10th of 2023. So this calendar, the land use approval was, if you all recall, was done before the council made the decision to, to move to the Tuesday, Thursday meeting and do away with the, the land use, the special call land use meetings. So this, this meeting schedule is consistent with the, that, that policy. I, sorry, Marnie, I shouldn't have. So, yeah, this would just be consistent, and it's just to establish the 2024 meeting schedule.
Does everybody like the way this schedule has been going? I mean, is it working or no?
I, I'm fine with it. I, I don't, I, I, I do have some fear that this isn't going to accommodate the land use stuff. I mean.
Well, it depends how packed they put the agenda, you know?
Depends on how many directions we give to the staff to pile it off.
Yeah. There, that's a good point, too. So.
So is there a way that we can, I don't know, streamline or, you know?
Limit it to X number of, of agenda items?
Talk less?
Concerned about limiting something.
Concerned about limiting it when we might have a lot of things we need to do in a hurry.
Well, right now, it hasn't been a problem. So we continue on and see if it stays not being a problem?
We can change it.
I mean, is that?
Yeah, I mean.
Is that agreeable?
I'm just, I'd say let's keep in, let's just think about it for the future, that in case we get all jammed up.
Okay.
Yeah. We can tweak it later or have a special call if we need extra time. That's always.
Let's open public comment up if there is any public comment, Marnie, please.
There is none.
Okay. Public comment is now closed. So any further discussion? Henry? Okay.
We had table, tab 16. I've got numerous calls to take a look at 16. The main thing is, we've done it right for 25 years. And what's wrong with the continuing you on with no, no changes? So what I'm doing is, I'm going to rescind my vote and change my vote to, for that reason.
Can you explain better?
On tab 16, which we already voted on.
So it's, it's.
So what's, what is the problem?
I'm rescinding my vote. I voted in favor of it.
Yes.
I'm now voting in opposition.
Oh, okay.
And hopefully, down the line, the, the people that notified me with complaints.
I don't even remember what tab 16 was.
The council procedures, the two business days.
I don't even remember.
Apparently, there's a lot of people that have a problem with doing it, redoing it.
Is it, is it the problem which I've had calls to about public comment? Is that what you're preferring? Preferring, referring to? And again, I, I would like to take a look at the public comment thing. I like the public involvement. What I don't like, is what I'm going to say now, is to listen to five people get up and bash us one after the other. I mean, that's sort of counterproductive, but.
Same thing.
Yeah, and the same thing. But I'm, I'm open, like you, Henry, to better communication with the public and everything. Maybe if we can, everybody work towards maybe doing something different.
Absolutely. I agree with you.
Okay. Before we, we do that, can we finish this tab 30 real quick, and then we can come back to that? Because we didn't finish tab 30.
And then I do need to address something about the request to make a change of vote. So there's a parliamentary.
Okay. All right. So, okay, so we already, there's no public comment on tab 30. I already closed it. So do I hear a motion to approve tab 30, the meeting schedule?
Yeah, I, I move to approve.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
All right. Marnie, we have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
On the.
All right. Now we're back to tab 16.
On the change of vote on 16. So just so everyone is aware, a, a person can change their vote at any time up to the point that it has been announced what, whether it passed or failed. So like when, when Marnie says, the motion passes X to whatever. Once that happens, then the vote belongs to the body. So it has to be a request made of the body to, the body meaning the five of you, to, to change the vote. And that can only be done by unanimous consent. So if anybody has an objection to that, they can, they can step in. So this is really a, a request to change the vote. And if anybody, you can deal with it on unanimous consent and just say, does anybody have any opposition? Assuming none, it'll be noted, and Marnie can change the vote.
Does anybody have any opposition to Henry's request?
Doesn't change the outcome.
Correct. It passed, I think it was 5-0. Now it will be 4-1.
Correct.
4-1.
Just want to change my vote. That's all.
Okay. All right. So I, I have one thing here.
So, I, I have one thing here, I, and I think we'll have to, maybe we can bring this up in January, to the January meeting. You know how that we passed the change on the advertisement that now it falls on the, the permittee? Okay, you know what I'm talking about, Jennifer, yeah, all right. You know what, okay, you have to advertise your property, you have to, you're, if you're, if you're getting a permit, you're going to do something, you have to, okay, before the village did all, they did it all, staff does it, okay? And so, I've had some phone calls about it, and I, I actually talked to you and Jamie the other night about it, at the Christmas party, actually. So, in, in the, in the village, Jennifer, right, charges, I mean, we charge for that, right?
Well, we don't cha-, charge for that specifically. We have a deposit that goes in for several things, and that's one of the things that could be taken out of the deposit. There's other engineering fees and things like that, and then any money that doesn't get used from the deposit gets returned back to the applicant.
Okay, all right. Well, let me, I'll, I'll just bring this back, and we'll put it for a discussion item or something at a later meeting. We'll get it on the agenda or something.
Regarding the fees?
Regarding, yeah, the, well, the, the fees, or the, because...
Doing it.
Doing it, the people, that's what I told you that have called me, or, or, some of them are upset that they're having to do it all now, and they'd rather, they'd rather pay to do it because the village knows what they're doing. So, anyways. All right?
So, is that direction for the after-action report, to redo the ordinance that we just changed?
Should, do we need to bring it and have a discussion, John, about it?
Yeah, I mean, it...
Okay.
I mean, I just want to be clear what you're asking me to bring back.
Yeah, yeah. It's going to be, that's what's going to come up, is to, that we put this back to where we do it, and not the applicant, yeah. That's what the phone calls have been, so...
Can I ask one thing before we leave, Maria? How this would work, and then we can put this on the January thing? There is a building for sale in Alamoata, and it might make a really good library for Alamoata, and if we would have to work with Monroe County, and this is Kimberley's, I guess, area, that's why I would bring it back in January, but how would we go about finding out who we would try to partner with, if it's something Monroe County would do with us, if we're going to redo our library and maybe move it to this other location? How does that all work? I mean, I know it's hard to answer.
No, with, if the council agrees, they want to look into that, then after council agrees, it'd be a matter of the village manager contacting the county administrator.
Okay, so that's something we can maybe look into in January?
You would like that as a discussion item in January?
When, yeah.
Yeah, I have it written down already.
Because Kimberley starts on the 8th, right?
Yes.
She'll be here on...
Thank you.
Meeting for the 9th, yeah. Anything else, council? Any further motion to adjourn, Henry?
Go home, yes, I move to go home.
I'll second that.